Participation makes this process work and I really, really sincerely appreciate it. So, welcome to the Fresno City Council Meeting for September 15th, 2015. So, we have roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandal. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. And Council President Capriolio.
I am here, thank you very much. Next, we have the invocation by Pastor Brad Bell of The Well. So, would everyone please stand and remain standing and we'll salute the flag immediately thereafter. So, welcome Pastor, thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you, it's my pleasure. As I was waiting here, just as we were waiting for the doors were opened, just reminded of how much I love my city. I love Fresno and I'm sure we all share that sentiment of loving our city. I was reminded also looking at the George Washington Gallery, that so much of leadership influences communities, influences movements. And was just reminded of the weight that you carry to provide leadership for our city, to provide direction for this community, to continue to shape this rich and diverse gift that we have been given in the city of Fresno. And yet, in that was reminded also just to be encouraged, that there is an authority even above that, that we have a Lord that is Lord of all. And so, I'd like to just pray if I could and ask for God's blessing on you and on your leadership as you lead our great city. Father in heaven, I am thankful for the privilege that we have to be a part of this sort of gathering here. And I'm grateful for these men and women who have accepted a call of leadership in our community. And I pray that they would lean in very deeply and abidingly in your presence in their life. We pray, Father, that you would continue to have your hand of blessing on our community. We're mindful of the rich history that we share but also know of the vulnerabilities in our community. And that Jesus is the one who can bring healing and some unity and some peace and some grace. And so, Father, we thank you that you are at work in our city and we pray for this time together, that decisions that would be made today would be made with wisdom and with humility, that leadership would be strong and yet humble, that they would seek you. And as a community, that we would celebrate the richness of being different and yet finding unity together under the headship of Christ. And so, we thank you and we give this time to you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you very much.
Raise the flag, please. Ready? So.
I'd like the leaders to declare the United States of America and the United Republic for which this stands. On the occasion of God, we are the people of this nation.
Thank you Pastor for those inspiring words. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to go to our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have several changes to the agenda.
Okay.
The first is item 1D, file number 161081 regarding an agreement with Bert's Rosa Strategy and Creative has been continued to 922 per staff. The second change is regarding the 205 timed item for joint meeting and the action to be taken is for both agency and council. And finally, under the consent item 1P, is to clarify which ordinance bill is being adopted today because there's two in the packet. So, it's going to be the version of the ordinance, the one that is provided with the supplement because it reflects the ordinance bill that was introduced at the last hearing by council. Changes to section 15-104A were included in the introduction and it is also included in the action for today. Those are all the changes I have for the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
Motion.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Quintero, all those in favor. Passes 5-0 with members Brand and Baines absent. Our next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of September 1st, 2016?
I have one change to that set of minutes. It is for file ID 161002, the 5:00 PM item. It's on the bottom of page 19. The text should be changed to reflect that Bill 34 was also amended. So, it should read, "Bill 34 was introduced as amended and adopted as ordinance 201631."
Thank you very much. With that modification, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Member Quintero, I'll second that motion, all those in favor. Passing, all those opposed. Forgot part of that. So, seeing none, passes 5-0 with Member Baines and Brand absent. The next part is council member reports and comments. My screen is clear, I'm sure somebody has something to say. There we go. Member Brandal.
Thank you Council President. I just wanted to report that Fresno State Bulldogs won their home opener last week. I was at the game, it was a lot of fun. So, plan on supporting them when they're playing at home. But more importantly, I did want to say that yesterday I got a fantastic tour, or two days ago, I got a fantastic tour of the Fulton Street Project. Randall Morrison and Scott Mosher, Wilma and Bill took my staff and I on a tour. We started at the south end of the mall where more work has been done, walked all the way to the north. I learned a couple of things that maybe slipped my mind. We're starting on the south, then we're jumping all the way to the north and the stuff in the middle is going to be the third phase. So, there were some challenges that were not anticipated, but so far, all of the challenges have been worked out and relatively few amount of change orders. So, I'm really glad to report that the project is on time and on budget within our targets. So, it was really great to see all that stuff being done down there.
Thank you, Member Brandal. Next is Member Soria.
Thank you Council President. I just wanted to thank Bruce and also Dell and Kevin who came out last Thursday. I had a community meeting at home in elementary, had raised the issue about recycling center that has become, or has raised some concerns in that neighborhood. And so, I appreciate you guys providing some background information and just joining me and listening to some of the concerns and issues that folks have. And so, we have opened up a case to look, to make sure that any concerns that they may have were able to resolve. So, I'm just looking forward to continuing working with staff to follow on that issue and hopefully bring some positive resolution to that neighborhood near Shields and West. I also just want to comment, I did get a chance to meet with the, Sophia was there with the consultants on the park's master plan. Excited about the planning efforts for our parks and, you know, looking at what the future will hold for parks here in the city of Fresno. I think it's a very important issue. So, I was grateful that I had an opportunity to kind of give my two cents and my feedback in terms of how we can make sure that we're effectively doing the outreach in our community and then how I can be a partner in that. You've seen, I think Bruce, in my community meetings, I draw a pretty, you know, big crowd and we get some good community folks out there. So, as I mentioned, my invitation is still there in terms of being a partner and making sure that folks in District 1 do get the opportunity to give input as we're working through the park's master plan. So, I want to just thank staff and the consultants for meeting with me. And those are it, thank you.
Thank you, Member Soria. Next is Member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to remind you about a great event we're having in southeast Fresno and that's going to be on Saturday, the 24th of September. It's going to be at Mosqueda Community Center. It's our annual event for children, it's called Carnaval. And we're having a lot of great events for the children. Everything is free except for the hot dogs and bottled waters, only a dollar. And I wanted to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for doing their usual great job in coordinating this event. We have a minimum of 3,000 people attend that event annually. So, it'll be from 12 to 5:00. And this year, we're going to be honoring our police and firefighters. And so, there'll be quite a few of them out there to work with the children. We're going to have raffles, we're going to have music and the different information tables from the different agencies. So, it's going to be a great day. Like I said, we'd like to invite you and be part of the 3,000-plus folks. So, looking forward to seeing you there and everyone's welcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The screen is clear, so it's my turn to comment a little bit. And thanks for acknowledging the Bulldogs, our Bulldogs. Hopefully, we're on the right path. We'll have a great season. The other thing, you know, Fresno State's athletics, of course, but that also relates to academics. And so, this is a new, this just came out yesterday, a news break that Fresno State wins another national ranking. So, congratulations to Dr. Castro and his faculty and students, but they were named the top public university in the country when it comes to reaching a graduation rate goals. That means they're graduating a lot of people. And in fact, so many, we're number one at Fresno State. So, as Dr. Castro says, another bold move by the university. I also attended a BIA Community Leadership Forum and it discussed regional growth in the Fresno-Madera areas. And Member Brandal and I have been reaching out to Madera to combine our efforts, combine our cities to come up with the best solution for regional development. We're so big right now, it's got to be on a regional basis, not a city basis. Also had a tour of the student cupboard at Fresno State and First Lady Castro is in charge of that. And it's a location where all the fruits and vegetables that students who have needs, and believe it or not, there's students at Fresno State, they go to bed hungry. I was shocked, I couldn't believe that. But not now because they have a cupboard and another facility called the pantry. So, students can come and get quality food at no price, no cost to them, just so they can go to bed not hungry. And I really thank First Lady Castro for her work at the student cupboard. Also, I spoke at the Fresno State Community Revitalization Summit and this was discussing the partnerships with ASI, other students, community leaders, community groups, Wesley Church, in the revitalization of El Dorado. And now, we're going to take that El Dorado footprint and move it over to Sierra Madre, which is the first street south of Shaw between Cedar and Maple. And we hope to have the same success there and it takes partnerships. And last but not least, this morning, several of us had the pleasure to welcome David Preciado. He's the Counsel of Mexico. And we raised the Mexican flag at City Hall and it was a great ceremony and it celebrates the 206th year of independence for Mexico. So, that is September 16th. I know a lot of people think Cinco de Mayo is the day of independence, it's not. It's actually September 16th, but we like Cinco de Mayo as well. So, those are my comments and the screen is clear. So, we're almost to the fun part, the ceremony. We've got to do one more piece of business and that's the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull any item from the consent calendar for discussion at 3:00 PM today? If so, please let me know. Okay, Member Soria.
I just wanted to pull one eye. I'm supportive of this item, but I just wanted to be able to give some comments for the record.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Member Quintero, I'll second that motion, all those in favor. Thank you. Before we vote, well, we already voted, so it's 5-0 with Members Baines and Brand absent. But I did not take it out to the public, I have a duty to bring it out to you folks. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on any item on the consent calendar? If you do, you can come forward and you have three minutes to discuss it, sir. If you'd like to come forward and discuss any item on the consent calendar, the floor is yours.
Does anybody have a consent calendar?
Yes. If you would give us, first give us your name and your address and then you'll have three minutes, sir. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Riyad Kirala. I'm 3767 Ferncroft Way in Dublin, California. And I'm here to, well, I was looking for some clarification of an item to dispose of a parcel. I believe it is, let me see which item it is specifically. It's item ID 161004.
I'm quoting, what is that?
Does it have A, B, C, or D next to it?
It's.
Oh, it's the 205 joint.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, it's an RDA, I'm sorry, a joint meeting with RDA. That comes later, this is just on the consent item. So, that will come a little bit later in the meeting.
I'm sorry about that, thank you.
No worries, no worries. Welcome from Dublin.
Thank you.
We'd love to have you moved down here, actually. So, Member Brandal.
Hey, Council President, can I quickly go over something I'd forgot in council comments?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I looked it up and it took me a little time for it to come up. I forgot to mention that this Saturday, a group called River Tree Fresno is going to do a cleanup operation along the San Joaquin River. If anybody would be interested, if that's the type of thing, of getting outdoors and helping beautify our city, is the type of thing you'd like to get into, very helpful to the environment. We're going to meet at the Starbucks at El Paso. That's at Herndon and Golden State, that's the brand-new shopping center at Herndon and Golden State. We're going to meet at Starbucks at 8:30 in the morning and the work is going to go till 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And you'll be given all the things that you need, all the tools, the gloves and everything that you need to help us pick up litter down on the river bottom and help beautify our community. So, I just wanted everybody to know about that. Again, that's at El Paso, Herndon and Golden State, this Saturday morning at 8:30 in the morning at the Starbucks. And we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Brandal, that's great news. Community participation always pays great dividends. So, next is Member Olivier, you had a comment, I believe?
Yeah, just on the topic of the downtown plan and the Fulton Corridor specific plan, just wanted to know, explain to me the comment period that it's closed, correct? Just kind of bring me up to date on that. And I guess the question that I have is if we needed more time, could we open the comment period again to allow folks, you know, perhaps to voice objection to, or at least voice concern to some of the things contained within the specific plan?
So, the comment period was open on July 27th and it closed on Monday, September 12th. And that was a little over the 45 days required for the environmental impact report, although we accepted comments on the plans and the code as well. So, right now, we're going through all the comments, identifying which ones need to be reflected in an updated version of the code and the plans and then getting that all ready to bring it back to you.
And what's the date that you are estimating for it to come back to council?
October 20th.
October 20th.
Right. And then, there's always at the Planning Commission, which would be October 12th, and at the public hearing here at City Council, there's always opportunity to make additional comments. Speakers can come up and make comments that way, too.
So, comments are still taken and taken into consideration?
All the way up to that public hearing.
For people that even come to speak in person, but the period of time to submit in writing is closed?
Correct.
Is it unusual for the council to perhaps extend to take more comment? Or is that something that would require a vote of the council to continue to open the comment period again in case some people missed out? Or is that something that could just be done administratively?
Well, council, there's a statutory comment period, but people can submit written comments all the way up to 24 hours prior to the council meeting.
So, they can still submit comments even though, I guess I don't understand, so the comment period is officially closed, but they can still submit? How does that work?
Council, may I just jump in very briefly? This is Tilia Clorius, City Attorney's Office. The comment period that is, that technically closed on the 12th is actually the statutory comment period under SEQA for the draft EIR. And certainly, the council can review and consider comments that are submitted according to the council's rule of procedures, but there is a minimum comment period that must be followed pursuant to SEQA.
Okay, so that has been fulfilled, but so, we're still taking comments. So, if there are people that are still out there that wish to voice concern or praise or whatever, then we can encourage them to continue to comment.
Yeah, and we would provide those comments to you in the agenda packet that came with the documents themselves.
That's great, thank you. Thank you, staff, thank you.
Thank you, Member Olivier.
Can I just follow up on that very quickly? So, how do folks know that they can still comment? Because I know that we said that the period had kind of, I guess, closed. So, I just want to make sure there's no confusion, so folks in the community actually know that they're still allowed to submit written comments and they will still be taken into account. Because I think that there was some folks from the community or residents that were interested in still providing written comments, but thought that they weren't allowed to per the deadline that you guys had posted.
Right. So, any additional comments that we got would be, you know, outside of the SEQA statutory period, but we will take any additional comments that we get into consideration and then make sure that those are all relayed to the council as well.
Okay, perfect. And when you're saying outside the statutory, that's just minimum? So, they could, that's why we could continue to receive them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council, to clarify, for any council item, any member of the public can submit written comments all the way up until 24 hours before the item is heard by the council.
I guess my only concern was that the department actually take those comments into consideration before, you know, they be brought to us. And that's what the concern is. So, but I'm hearing that you guys will, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, this is one of the best parts of the day and the one you've all been waiting for. This is called ceremonial presentations. First, we have three today. So, the first one will be the proclamation of Mexican Independence Day and the sponsor is Councilmember Soria.
Consul, you can come to the front. So, I'm excited this afternoon to welcome, actually, I think maybe for the first time, right, to visit our council chambers here, to our Mexican consul, David Manuel Preciado Juarez. So, first, I want to welcome you to Fresno. I know that we've met when they had the celebration for you in your guys' office. And thank you for this morning, for the partnership. I know a couple of my colleagues were there this morning in celebration of the 206th anniversary of Mexican independence. I was there and I was able to give a few remarks, but I did want to make sure that we presented you with a proclamation really commemorating the 206th anniversary of the Mexican Independence Day here in the city of Fresno. I just wanted to share a little bit of the consul because he is new to Fresno and this is the first time that he's here in our chambers. So, El Consul Preciado was born in Ensenada, Baja California. He holds his bachelor's degree in law from the Autonomous University of Baja California as well as a master's in political action and citizen participation in the rule of law from University Rey Juan Carlos Francisco de Vitoria, El Ustre Colegio de Abogados de Madrid. Very long. El Consul Preciado has served in various positions as advisor and head in different entities and government institutions and has extensive experience in public administration at various levels. Before his appointment, which was on June 15th, 2016, Consul David Manuel Preciado served as head consul at the consulate of Mexico in Little Rock, Arkansas, and as a representative of the Paisano Program at the consulate general of Mexico in Houston and later received the appointment of minister. So, we want to really thank you for being here this afternoon, for being a partner in our community, for serving the thousands of Mexicans that reside in this region in the Central Valley and for continuing to showcase the culture and history of our community that resides here in California in the Central Valley. So, just, Clerk, if you could read our proclamation for the record in just one second. For me, this is, it's a prideful moment to have here, the consul. I am very proud to come of Mexican immigrant parents that came here in the 70s. I obviously am Mexican-American, born here, but very proud to be able to share and really embrace the culture that this community brings to the city of Fresno and to the state of California. So, I'm just grateful for the work that you guys do and very proud to be here with you to celebrate Mexican Independence Day, really the bravery of thousands and thousands of Mexicans in Mexico that fought and that were brave to reach their independence. But also, as I mentioned outside in the ceremony, really highlighting the contributions of thousands of Mexicans who have come here to this country and the contributions that they have made and continue to make every day as farmworkers, as doctors, as elected officials, as teachers, as leaders in our community, as business owners. And so, very prideful to be part of the Mexican-American community. So, thank you for being here. And I will present you here with this resolution, if the clerk can read it for the record.
Whereas Miguel Hidalgo Huay Castilla became the father of Mexican independence with historic proclamation which urged his fellow Mexicans to take up arms against the Spanish government. And whereas on September 16th, 1810, the cry of Dolores was heard from a small town in Guanahado, Mexico and marked the beginning of the declaration of war against the colonial government and the fight of the independence of Mexico, which ended 300 years of colonial rule on September 28th, 1821. And whereas the city of Fresno is home to about 520,000 people, having 49.6 being Hispanic or Latin origin and a high percentage of those being Mexican descent, who with their unique identity form a part of the overall identity of the city of Fresno. And whereas the consulate of Mexico serves as a connection and resource to many residents in the Central Valley and work tirelessly to keep strong ties between our city, many surrounding areas, and the country of Mexico. And whereas the consulate of Mexico and Fresno not only provide services related to passports, visas, et cetera, but also valuable resources for Mexican nationals living in our city and can be of assistance to victims of crime as well as provide information about the US legal system for those who have been victims of criminal or civil law violations and assist with legal representation and medical services. Now therefore be resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the council of the city of Fresno, do hereby support the consulate of Mexico with their celebration of independence of Mexico and all of the contribution of the Mexican people to our city and do hereby recognize independence of Mexico 206th anniversary on September 16th, 2016.
So, just one other announcement, in celebration of Mexican Independence Day, there are a number of things happening. I know that there had an event yesterday at Arte Americas. I do want to highlight that tonight at 5:30, the doors will open at Chachancy Park to continue the celebration of Mexican independence. And I believe around 7:00, 7:30, they will have the traditional El Grito. So, we do want to invite our entire community to come out, the residents of city of Fresno, to come and experience what is, you know, our history and our culture here in Mexico. And so, we just wanted to make sure that people knew. I did want to give an opportunity to the consul to say a couple of things.
Well, thank you very much, all of the members. Thank you for the time, for having us today. And all of you, thank you. I mean, I am the head post from the Mexican consulate. We cover the whole Central Valley, more than 1.5 Mexicans living around. But in the end, we celebrate today. They're proud to be Mexican. And many of us were born in Mexico, others, they are born here, they have one parent or mother from Mexico, they become Mexican, too. But I wanted to say thank you for all of those that, Americans, that really opened the doors, your heart, for allowing us to really become only one community. And thus is our purpose as a head of post from the Mexican consulate. We wanted to live daily here as a human beings. Thank you very much and thank you all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. And as she's coming up, our next ceremonial is a proclamation of Welcoming America Week from our own council president, Paul Capriolio.
Thank you very much, Member Brandal. I teased the council and I said, oh, you're from Enchilada, Baja California. And we had some fun with that. Congratulations again. Well, good afternoon. Councilmember Baines would normally be here for this presentation with me, but he's the chairman of the air board, so he has to lead that meeting and he's trying to get here as quickly as he can. With that, though, Lisa, could you and your group come up here and join us?
Yes.
Okay, well. Okay, well, a few. There you go. This is so important. So this is Fresno's welcoming week. It's about the importance. You guys can come over here. There you go, so everybody can see the sign. Ah, great.
The principal is sitting right there.
Yes, would you come up? Absolutely. You don't need a principal, but you do need a principal. Okay, so welcoming week is about the importance of joining together in spirit of unity to build a better, safer, stronger Fresno that embraces everyone. So the city of Fresno's success in part is contingent upon everyone being involved and participating and having an equitable, equal stake in our community activities. If you want a city to grow, we must be receptive to all cultures and have a mutual understanding of what they represent in Fresno. So we are here to hopefully create and perpetuate an environment where all cultures, all ethnicities, all races feel welcomed and that everyone can call Fresno home. So Lisa, can you give us more information on that?
Sure. Welcoming week is actually an international celebration. It started in America, but it has become international. And this week, we've had a variety of celebrations. Yesterday, we had a welcoming center opened at Fresno Adult School where we have different organizations coming to serve immigrants, but everyone, such as voter registration. And so we wanted to encourage people to come and get services at Fresno Adult School. Today, we have the proclamation at Fresno City Hall. Thank you very much. And on Saturday, we have a citizenship oath ceremony at Fresno County Library, all part of the welcoming week celebration. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So this is the proclamation and I think we have a photo up. I love paparazzi, eh?
And he's ours.
Yes, he does a good job. And Victoria's mine. Her camera's a little less, but it still does the job. Okay, so this is the proclamation. It's signed by every single council member as well as the mayor of the city of Fresno. And we sincerely appreciate all you do for us. And we'll have Madam Clerk read the proclamation. And this is your moment, well deserved.
Thank you.
I'll hold this while you.
I want to thank all the students. I want to thank all the students that came today. They've been helping us in a variety of ways. They are our leaders in Fresno Adult School.
We always think of them as leaders of the future, but they're actually leaders of today, even better yet. So thank you, thank you very much. And can you read the proclamation?
Whereas welcoming week is a nationwide effort to renew our commitment to core American values by taking actions in the spirit of welcoming. During welcoming week, we honor the spirit of unity that brings neighbors together. And whereas new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas regardless of where you were born or what you look like, we are residents united in an effort to build a stronger Fresno by recognizing the contributions that we all make and by working together, we can achieve greater prosperity to make Fresno the city where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to grow their roots. And whereas let us come together to create more prosperous communities and to reaffirm that Fresno stands as the beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City council members do hereby encourage the people of Fresno to join together to build stronger communities across Fresno and proclaim the week of September 16 through 25, 2016 to be welcoming week in the city of Fresno.
Congratulations, round of applause. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, and the students, great job, great job. Wish I could get a T-shirt like that, though. I'll take it, large.
Still waiting on Councilmember Baines. He's the next ceremonial.
I think he's authorized me to try to fill his shoes, which would be.
You're going to fill his shoes, all right.
I'm going to try.
The next ceremonial is proclamation of Maxie L. Parks Day.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, welcome, welcome. And before you go, this is Greg Barfield, and Chief of Staff for Oliver Baines, who is at the Airboard meeting, right Greg? He's the chairman, so he can't, he wants to be here desperately, believe me, but he can't make it so far. So it's incumbent upon me as president, my knees are shaking. You're, you're the man, the myth, the legend, all the above, and gosh, it's great to have you here. And we have this proclamation for you and we'll get to that in a minute, but I want to ask you a couple of questions. In high school, how many championships or All-American type status did you have? I understand football?
Football, wrestling, and track was the three sports that I participated in high school and track and field and wrestling. I was league champion in, in both of those and represented in the state meet in both track. And football, you know, that's a, all about team sport and our team performed well, but we wasn't able to make it to the championship round in high school. But for three years in track and field, one year in wrestling, and two years in football.
That's amazing, amazing, as well as your academic achievements also.
Well, education is very important for anyone, especially if you're trying to move on up into a higher education. So it's very important that you discipline yourself to try to achieve in your academics as well as your athletics.
Now, we were talking earlier and we had one thing in common. He was athletic and academic champion, if you will, and I worked real hard in academics, just that because I was a little slow, if you know what I mean. So I had to work hard. So as a result, we have a thing in common. We want to show you what that is. We were kind of squares, weren't we?
You know, when you, when you focus and dedicate yourself to try to succeed and you have your peer pressures come at you and they want you to do other things that might distract from that, so you kind of get titled in a category. And I did get kind of titled as a square in high school and so, because I didn't want to go out and do so many activities prior to, you know, sports activities and things like that. So, you know, they say, well, you're just a little square.
Yeah, well, you're a big square. I'm, I'm a little bit smaller square, but as squares, we'll stick together. We're doing, we're doing just fine. And just touching this man, he's a gold medal winner out of Fresno in track and field. I mean, incredible, absolutely incredible.
Fresno has been really blessed to have some great performers, athletic performers. West Fresno, you know, we grew up with Randy Williams, who's an Olympic champion, myself. Then we have so many national champions that came out of West Fresno. You know, your football, basketball, you got Charles Young, who was a football, Super Bowl champion. And then you got McDonald's, who's also a champion. So Fresno has been really blessed to have great athletes and great performers and great role models. And this is such an honor for me to be recognized for this personal achievement of personal honor. You know, I tell young people all the time, you know, when you, when you are growing up and you discipline, you discipline yourself and dedicate yourself to a goal, a standard, you never know what the rewards is going to occur down the line. And this is just, I'm just an example of things that come without planning, but just by disciplining, putting the efforts forth as you grow and develop, you know, these rewards come later on in life. And very appreciative of this recognition and I thank the city council. I thank all involved who helped make this day come about. It's just humbling.
Well, again, thank you. Round of applause. It's a great honor for us. And again, those are some great athletes, Henry Eller, there's a long list.
Can't name them all.
Can't name them all. But you know what? We can name the gold medal winner in Fresno, Mr. Williams and Mr. Parks. Absolutely, never forget that, never forget that. Thank you. Would you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas Maxie L. Parks was born July 9, 1951 in Lee County, Arkansas. Maxie and his family moved to Fresno, California at the age of 10, where he attended West Fresno Elementary and Junior High Schools. At this, excuse me, it was at this time in the 1960s that Maxie began to formally embrace his love for many sports, especially track and field. Whereas Maxie is a 1970 graduate from Washington Union High School. While at Washington Union, Maxie participated in football, wrestling, and track and field. Maxie was proclaimed an All-American athlete twice while in high school and a league champion in wrestling. Maxie furthered his studies at Fresno City College in the 1970s and completed his two years in 1972, obtaining a track scholarship and an associate's degree. Maxie received a full scholarship to attend the University of California, Los Angeles from 1972 to 1975, obtaining a bachelor's degree in sociology. Whereas Maxie was a part of four US teams that toured Europe and trained for the 1976 Olympics in Montreal, Canada. Maxie Parks placed fifth in the 400 meters and obtained a gold medal in the 1600 meter relay. Maxie continued to pursue, pursue his dream of track and field training for the 1980s Olympic until the United States boycott of the Olympic Games for that year. 1981 is when Maxie hung up his spikes and retired from competing in track and field. Maxie has been inducted into the Hall of Fame in the city and county of Fresno, Fresno City College, University of California, Los Angeles, Athletics, and Washington Union High School. Whereas in 1996, Maxie became an active member of the West Side Church of God and is still is today. Maxie was elected West Side Church of God Board Member in 1999. In 2000, Maxie became the West Side Church of God Board Vice Chairman and holds that position presently. In 2001, Maxie became the West Side Church of God Building Fund Chair and was able to raise about $400,000 to erect a 27,000 square foot building to be used for the members attending the West Side Church of God and its community of southwest Fresno. Because of Maxie's knowledge and integrity in raising funds for the West Side Church of God, Maxie was formally elected to the chair of the West Side Church of God's fundraising programs in 2009. Whereas Maxie L. Parks receives a tremendous amount of support from his family, friends, church members, and the community of Fresno, Maxie has happily married to his wife, Laverne Mason Parks, for 43 years. Maxie and Laverne has three daughters and a son and is the proud grandfather of seven of their union. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Oliver Baines III, as a member of the city council, do hereby extend my deepest gratitude and encourage all Fresnoans to help commemorate the extraordinary and successful life of Maxie L. Parks.
I just want to make, this is great, really, standing ovation, please, please. This man's a legend. I just want to say, although Maxie hung up his spikes, he never hung up his commitment to the city of Fresno, to the youth of Fresno, to the churches of Fresno, to Fresno in its entirety. And you are an inspiration, you are a true leader, you are a role model that we all would like to be more like, guaranteed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maxie? Maxie?
Yes.
Maxie? Before they sit down, could you introduce your family?
I got a large family here, I guess.
Fresno is your family.
Yeah, Fresno is my family. My son-in-law, Ray Moore. My goddaughter, Angela Barfield. My oldest sister, Clauselle, Dennis Parks. My middle sister, Bobby, Parks, Gaines. My wife of 43 years, my high school sweetheart, Laverne Mason Parks. And these are my babies. This is my granddaughter, my oldest granddaughter, Ryanne Harris. My middle baby, Ambrosia Harris Parks. And my number one daughter, Chanelle Parks Moore. Thank you all so much.
Oliver, I'm sure Oliver. Did you guys want to get a picture of the square?
Appreciate that. Next, we'll go to General Administration. Item 2A, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application. Good morning, Director Moser, how are you?
Good afternoon, Council President, doing well. Council, council members and colleagues, Scott Moser with Public Works Department. And the item before you concerns $1.2 million in federal funding in the regional surface transportation program. That's really savings that's been accrued from other projects completed over a number of years. The proposal before you is to utilize those funds to convert streetlights along 12 major corridors in the city, covering all seven council districts, from high-pressure sodium to LED streetlights. And it's estimated about 3,100 lights total out of our 42,000 in the city. That, upon completion, the project would result in a savings to the city of about $280,000 a year in our gas tax fund that pays the streetlight energy bill. So we have a project proposal before you that has a return on investment in under five years, and that's a savings that would keep on giving. Both myself and our project manager for this effort, Scott Crowder, are here if you, should you have any questions, but staff would recommend approval of the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any member of the public like to come forward and discuss this item? This is the opportunity to do that. If so, you give us your name and address in about three minutes. Seeing none, back here to the council. First up is Member Brandal.
Scott, I've got a couple of quick questions for you. Thanks for the report. I remember when I first came on council and I started putting in some streetlight, streetlight bulbs. You guys allowed me to change light bulbs and the receptors on top and.
Censor, the censor.
The censor, yes. And then Councilman Capriolio recognized leadership and he jumped in on that. And so that, you know, that kind of began putting the focus on streetlights in the city of Fresno. Soon after that, Councilman Brand came forward with a project that spent about a million dollars, getting us caught up. And I think in, in most instances, we're caught up as far as putting out the, the streetlights that have been down either to copper wire theft or just bulbs that have gone out. So you guys have done a great job. When we were out doing that, you know, I noticed that there were some areas where there were LED lights. You guys, I think we're doing some testing and stuff of LED lights. We took a meeting and you began to talk to us about the benefits of having these LED lights, right? And right now, when you did your staff report, you really glossed over it, which that's fine, but I think it's really great news for the city of Fresno moving forward. Could you really tell us going forward, the benefits of moving to LED lighting over standard lighting that we've had in the past?
Absolutely. Well, very much like what, just in the private sector, in our community, what people are doing in their own residential. doing in their own residential homes or commercial businesses have gone from an older-style incandescent-type light to LED. For streetlights, the new fixtures, they use about half or less of the energy of the old-style high-pressure sodium. So obviously, there's savings there. It's very significant. And, you know, our streetlight energy bill for the city of Fresno on our 42,000 lights, that's about $2.8 million a year. So it's a very significant amount, even within our traffic signal streetlight operating budget. $2.8 million is significant. And that's gas tax funding, that's a lot of sidewalks that can be fixed or streets that can be paved and so on. So the challenge, of course, is how to do it. There's an upfront capital investment required, and it's more than just changing a bulb, it's changing the entire head up on the streetlight pole. So this, again, looking at 1.2 million, covers 3,100 lights. And this, plus the item the council approved for an on-bill finance project that PG&E had, that would get us to about 10%, pretty close to 10% of the inventory. So very, very positive savings and benefits on top of just the pure energy. The feedback we've gotten from our police department, as well as some groups within the community, is that the quality of the light, it's a little bit brighter and crisper, not quite as warm of a temperature, but it's even easier to see at night. For example, we did an initial pilot project in the Eldorado Park neighborhood, and feedback from Fresno PD was, hey, this is great. It's very, even though it didn't make it brighter, it made it easier to see.
And Scott, what is the life expectancy of one of the LED bulbs?
Let's see, I know the high-pressure sodium is about a seven-year life, and we're talking 10...
Sodium's about five to seven, it'll be 15 to 20.
Yep, 15 to 20 years on the new LED, so...
See, I remembered that from that meeting. Cap, that means we're going to have to stick around a long time to replace those lights.
I'm in.
Okay, he's in, unbelievable, isn't it? 15 to 20, so 15 to, the life expectancy of the bulbs go from seven years to 15 to 20, doubling the lifespan of the bulbs, meaning fewer of our personnel have to spend their energies. They're still going to be doing electrical things, of course, but few of them spending their energy going up there and changing bulbs, which we at one time had fallen behind on. So I think this is a win-win for the city of Fresno. And it's not, it's one of those things, you're not going to see, you know, just the whole city's lights being changed overnight. Like you said, this is really only 10% of our stock. We've got to figure out a way of converting the rest of the stock, but it saves the taxpayers a lot of money in multiple ways in the long run. So I think it's fantastic. So I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Member Sawyer.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for, I know that we've had a number of meetings on this, and we also asked a number of questions, excited about, for the same reasons that my colleague just mentioned about some of the savings. I am, you know, glad to see the new map, because I know that you guys had a preliminary map, and so I'm glad to see that there's, obviously, in some of the major streets that run through my district, we'll see definitely benefits. So that's, that's great. I think the benefits that were mentioned are very, very helpful to our taxpayers. Just wondering whether we've talked about, or we have thought about how these savings can potentially be used to look at retrofitting the, you know, slowly, but hopefully, surely, retrofitting some of the other lights that obviously will not be retrofitted through these funds.
And as noted in the staff report, council, there's one opportunity that the savings from this effort could then be plowed back into additional conversions. So that $280,000 a year, one option, once that's done, could be to invest those dollars in additional LED conversions and being local funds at that point, that could go into neighborhood, streetlight conversions. And if that is done, it will be really kind of a snowball building effect, or known in finance as more of a waterfall type effect, where it just keeps spilling over and building up to additional savings. With that approach, the city, the city could conceivably do all the conversion in about 12 years.
Okay, perfect. And so, is that kind of part of a policy that we've established? Have we've talked about it to make sure that as soon as these savings, you know, come in, we don't utilize them for something else, but try to kind of move forward?
Well, that's a budget discussion. As the Public Works Director pointed out, the future savings that come from the reduced energy costs come out of gas tax. That gas tax could be then used to fund additional streetlights, provided the council doesn't decide to use it to repave the residential street rather than to change out the streetlights. And as we know, repaving residential streets is also one of those priorities. So if the council at some point wants to make, probably with next year's budget, to set aside future savings to fund this over a period of time, that's the prerogative of the council. The trade-off would be is that those savings would not be available then to repave residential streets, which is something that the council always looks for.
Yeah, and so I guess it becomes a policy call. So I think it's something for my colleagues and also our next mayor to think about as we try to figure out how we move forward in retrofitting some of the other lights with some of these savings. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, and I'll be supportive of this item.
Member Cantel? Oh, thank you, sir. Okay, the screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes six-zero with Member Brand absent. Okay, we're going to go to our 2:00 timed item, Continued Hearing Regarding Vacation of a Portion of Blythe Avenue. That would be Public Works. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, councilmembers. My name's Jason Cammott. I am the Chief Surveyor at the City of Fresno Public Works Department. I'm here today to ask council to open a hearing for the vacation of a portion of North Blythe Avenue and a public utility and landscape easement that is adjacent to that vacation. This hearing's date was set by Resolution 1107-D and was approved by consent on August 18th, 2016. It has been properly noticed and published in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code. This vacation is being requested by the adjacent property owners, and it would essentially remove a sidewalk and landscape area that's no longer in use, and it would allow them to move their fence over. It's conditioned to have them move their fence over and remove the sidewalk that essentially goes nowhere to the north. Part of that vacation process would be to retain a 20-foot-wide storm drain easement that is located on the north end where there are existing flood control facilities that The remaining right-of-way will be able to accommodate the existing conduit, streetlight facilities, as well as the existing curb and gutter and street. So the street and curb and gutter and streetlight facilities will remain, and it's just removal of land that's not being used by the public. Thank you. At this time, as staff recommends approval of this vacation, at this time, I ask council to open the hearing up, open to the public.
Thank you very much, and we'll do just that. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item, this is the opportunity to do so. Please come forward. Seeing none, back to the council and Member Brandow.
Council President, this is in my district, so I just wanted to say, I know that, having talked with many of you, you have alleyways and different things that you vacate from time to time to make improvements for the neighborhoods. And in District 2, we didn't have so many, as many alleys built when District 2 was being constructed. But in this case, and it's not an alley, but it's definitely an area where some residents got together and noticed a piece of land that was really adjacent to them that had been dilapidated, and they're going to help us beautify it, they're going to take responsibility for it. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve this item today. And thank you, Jason.
Motion by Member Brandow, seconded by Member Baines. The screen is clear, all those in favor? Opposed. Passes six-zero, Member Brand absent. At this point, Member Baines, will you please address the 205 issue?
Yeah, there's going to be a joint meeting of the City of Fresno and successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Fresno. And essentially, council, this is just a resolution affirming the closed session discussion last week on this, on Lot 2. So we can take the item out to the public. Are any members of the public that wish to comment on the item?
My name is Riyad Khairala, and I'm from 3612 West San Jose.
Sir, the people in the back can't hear you. Could you, you can get that mic a little bit closer. Could you spell your last name for us, too, please? Thank you.
And I'm from 3612 West San Jose, Fresno. I have a home in Fresno, too, so. I was following the disposition of those two parcels for some time, and they were advertised on various commercial outlets. And the idea was they would go through an auction through the successor agency, but I just noticed recently that has, they have been disposed of directly to a private party without going through the auction.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, sir.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
That's not the case, sir. So this is not disposing of anything. We don't have the authority to do that. The Oversight Board does.
Okay, well, whatever. I mean, it's a, somebody has, the successor agency advertised it on LoopNet and on their website that it was, they were going to be offered for sale to the public in an auction. I mean, that's, that's, it's there. So I'm, I think Marlene, I've talked with her before, I've talked with her staff, been awaiting this, these two parcels to be announced by the successor agency or some other agency that is disposing of them. But that has not happened until today, I noticed, that there's a resolution to sell them directly to a private party without going through the process of auctioning the parcels.
I'd be happy to clarify the resolution, that we can't sell the private party, and we can't sell this in a resolution, sir. We're simply stating that we're not going to exercise our option as a city when that, when it goes to the Oversight Board. We're recommending that they sell directly to a single party, but we are not selling this at all.
So are you offering it for free to the private?
We don't have the ability to sell it, sir.
Okay, well, who, somebody is selling it.
The Oversight Board. And we'd be happy to talk with you offline a little bit to clarify, but this is not the Oversight Board, so we don't have the ability to sell, to sell this item, to sell these parcels.
Okay, well, then, what I would ask respectfully is to postpone the resolution on this, on these two items, the two parcels, until we get a resolution on with whoever is responsible for disposing of those, of those two parcels. That's okay with you?
We'll talk, we can chat offline. Thank you.
Thanks.
He just doesn't understand the process. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on the item? If you, sure, let's put a comment.
My name is Clift Italian. I'm from downtown Fresno. I'm a property and a developer of substantial amount of properties. And I'm here in support of the motion to sell the property as indicated on the agenda. I would like to extend my thanks for the support and would like to urge you to affirm such support, because it's going to serve to preserve a substantial amount of investment as well as help facilitate a substantial amount of investment in downtown. I understand that there may be other interests, as indicated by this gentleman, and I'd like to add that a little bit of research revealed that the decision by the Oversight Board was taken, and it was a policy adopted outside of the rules for such adoption of policies because it was never put on the agenda. So as of now, the Oversight Board does continue to have the capacity to accept the recommendations of the council, and I would urge your support in doing so. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. I'll make a motion that we approve the item.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six-zero with Councilmember Brand absent. Council President.
Thank you. We'll close that joint meeting and adjourn that with your assistance. Thank you, sir. Next is the 210 timed item, appearance by Costel Konstantin Fiora. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. F-U-I-O-R-E-A is the last name. If you'd like to come forward, this is the opportunity. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. And this will be the Item 4C, a resolution to support high-speed rail. This is sponsorship by Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. And, you know, I could, I could say a lot on this topic, but I think the resolution speaks for itself. Quite honestly, in all candor, for some reason, this topic is extremely controversial in Fresno. And while I can certainly understand why there is potentially concerns about the project and implementation, I think right now, we're at a situation where we in Fresno need to be supportive of what's happening in our city. High-speed rail is occurring, high-speed rail is happening, it is not going anywhere, and we as policymakers, in my opinion, need to stand up for that. We need to stand up for what's happening in our city and be supportive and hope for its success, because God help us in Fresno if it's not successful. And our city is halfway torn up without a functioning system. And while I don't believe that should happen, I'm going to do everything in my power to ensure that it is successful. Furthermore, the benefits of high-speed rail for us here in Fresno, us in the Central Valley, but particularly here in Fresno, are innumerable. We can see the benefits that are occurring right now with all the people that are working, all the infrastructure work and repairs that we have from the benefit of high-speed, from high-speed rail right now in Fresno. It's critical to our city. So some time ago, our friends at the county decided to withdraw support after they had gone on record in support of high-speed rail. I thought that was a grave mistake. I thought that given all of the opportunities that surround high-speed rail, for the county to make a decision like that was irresponsible. I think that we in the city of Fresno have the opportunity to right that ship, to once again place us in a position to be the only city, only jurisdiction in the valley, to be supportive of high-speed rail, where it's actually occurring and where it's actually happening. I think that we need to send that message loud and clear to the people of this state, to the governor, and to the high-speed rail authority, that we here in Fresno do want high-speed rail to succeed because it's in the best interest of our residents. And we as policymakers are taking a very strong, bold position on that. So I know that several people are, probably want to weigh in on this topic, and I welcome that, welcome the debate, of course, but I'm going to make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Next, we'll take it out to the public. I have several cards here, and we'll start with Michael Lopez. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes, and welcome, sir, good to see you.
Michael Lopez, 5640 North Dalmar, that's in Fresno. Hello, council members. I'm the business manager for the sheet metal workers for this area. First of all, I sincerely want to thank the council president and council members for bringing this resolution up for consideration. Through all the controversy high-speed rail has brought, one thing cannot be ignored. High-speed... one thing cannot be ignored. High-speed rail has generated career opportunities. Career opportunities in the construction of high-speed rail for the people of Fresno. Residents who might still be on government, government assistance and collecting unemployment insurance. These careers will create the synergy that Fresno so desperately needs. Careers that will enable them to buy homes and live the American dream. We need to continue to be proactive, innovative, so the people of Fresno can prosper. That is why I'm in favor of passing this resolution. If you would see through my eyes, as I have, how encouraged these people are when told they're going to work, you would approve this resolution. Approving this resolution is another step forward to ensuring that the maintenance yard will be built in our backyard. Let's stop sending jobs to our neighboring cities. If you're in favor of creating careers for the people of Fresno, then approve this resolution. Thank you, Council President and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Next is Kathy Omachi. Good to see you. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Kathy Omachi, seven, five, nine, F Street, Reedley. Co-chair for the Chinatown Revitalization. Good afternoon. It's great to see all of you. Once again, I come before you to speak in opposition of this resolution. There is no need for a resolution at this time since the City of Fresno has not opposed high-speed rail since its inception and has taken no action that has been in a negative nature to high-speed rail in all the years that it's been going on. Therefore, I can only determine that it is one of two things since high-speed rail has damaged areas and businesses under its present construction. It has disregarded concerns of businesses locally in Chinatown that have lost fifty to seventy-five percent of their business during the protracted construction and demolition of over nine buildings. The only issue I could see for this resolution is occurring a favor from the governor's office. This is not necessary since the governor is now very desperate to make sure that there is support for this project. We have expressed our concerns locally, statewide and federally. We are very pleased that there have been two bills presented to the governor to sign that would modify some of the behavior of high-speed rail. This, these bills passed both houses in a bipartisan effort. Major issues that are not concerned, that have not been discussed is the three years that will impact the community when the freeway ninety-nine is jogged over a hundred feet. If people who are now in school are looking at the benefits of high-speed rail, they need to look at the negative impact on the communities, thank you, surrounding the proposed jogging over of the freeway. Additionally, billions of dollars have been sold, and I will sum up, have been spent on this project. Proportionally, very little have gone to businesses and employment concerns of the valley. There's been poor planning, poor management, poor coordination and poor performance here and now of the current high-speed rail plan. We need to look very critically at the actual numbers of people that are receiving benefits for the billions of dollars that have been spent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Steven Gonzalez. After Steven will be Christian Gonzalez. You'll, you'll be next. Good afternoon, Steven. Thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Steven Gonzalez. I live on five, three, two, seven, North Millbrook. And I'm an engineering student at Fresno State. And I do support the high-speed rail because I feel like it's going to be a great investment in our future, considering that students going into college could live cheaply in the valley and can commute efficiently, efficiently to like schools like UCLA and bigger schools, maybe offering them more of a wider education, like they want to get a PhD in engineering, like you could do it there. And hopefully that'll make them want to give back to the valley too, since they've lived here longer. And I, I feel like it's a great investment in the future and that's why I support the high-speed rail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christian? After Christian will be Scott Eliya. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gonzalez. I live on nine, four, six, three, North White House Drive. I'm a Fresno State student, president of I Will Ride at Fresno State. I worked downtown Fresno at a Precision Civil Engineering as a intern and I've kind of seen the impact of high-speed rail just in downtown with the downtown revitalization project. And I think it's just an amazing thing to come to Fresno, especially from an engineering standpoint. The opportunity is endless for an engineering student, not even engineering students. I mean, this, it's such a massive project. It spans, it can go from one end of the spectrum to another. So I think job-wise, it's great. It's going to be great for Fresno. It's going to be great for the valley. And I'm in a hundred percent support of the high-speed rail. So thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, how do I get an I Will Ride shirt, by the way? Okay, good deal.
Okay, next is Scott Eliya and after Scott will be Brandon Lynn Hastings. Good afternoon, Scott. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Scott Aliya. I am from, I live on fourteen, fifty-six, East Bulldog Lane. I'm also a student at Fresno State and a member of the I Will Ride Club. I'm a junior with, majoring in civil engineering and I work as an intern over Allen Mock Engineering on Palm and Knees. I am also in support of high-speed rail for all of the endless job opportunities and benefits that it'll bring to the valley. And I just think it's overall a great project that we all should be in support of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brandon Lynn Hastings is next. After Brandon will be J.D. Bennett. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Brandon Lynn Hastings. I live on twelve, twenty-three, North Arthur Tower District. I'm hugely in support of the high-speed rail, mostly because I am passionate about downtown Fresno revitalization. And it's interesting that there's a lot of opposition against that as well across our city. But I've seen the impact of jobs, especially in my generation that it's had. I got a job through it. A lot of my colleagues have got a job through it. It's making a huge impact on some of the construction agencies and stuff that exist in Fresno. There's downsides and upsides to every project, but we haven't invested in infrastructure in our country in a long time and it's about time that we do so. So there is going to be sacrifices that have to be made along the way. There's sacrifices that were made to build this nation. So it's how do we approach these sacrifices in the best way possible, I think, is the bigger issue. Keeping it on grade level, keeping jobs in Fresno is huge for the city and even the surrounding cities. We have a huge epicenter in Fresno of space that doesn't get used. But the high-speed rail is going to allow for job opportunities. There is tech industries in, in Silicon Valley that need to expand, that aren't able to use the space that they have to run their businesses efficiently. High-speed rail will allow for that to open up and bring income into Fresno as well as expand in the Silicon Valley. So I'm in huge support of it and this proposal for an alliance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bennett, good afternoon. Good to see you again. It was a great watching the flight return last night on TV. I was trying to get out there, but I couldn't make it with our honor flight, eleventh one, I believe.
It was a great, great return.
Yeah, I can see.
I was proud to be a part of it again. My name is J.D. Bennett. I'm the commander of the fourteenth district of the American Legion. I, I support our veterans here in the valley through advocacy and, and speaking largely in part of their voice. Address is three, five, zero, nine, First Street, Fresno. I'd like to know what the purpose of this conclave is. This is an utter waste of taxpayer time and money. The county got it right. They finally got it right. Fresno City's leader has already sold out the people of Fresno by an affirmation, the high-speed rail, by accepting the federal handouts. The resolution is nothing more than an outward expression of opinion. And since the City of Fresno's opinion seems to be going forward with it, I find that this resolution is an embarrassment to the City of Fresno. It will have no weight or no bearing on the outcome. The governor and his pocket puppet leading Fresno has made sure that this project is moving forward. High-speed rail implementation has already started. The footprint of Fresno proper has forever been changed by this high-speed rail debacle. We in Fresno are nothing more than guinea pigs for a project that is bound to fail because it's the only area that is pushing forward for it. Instead of wasting the people's time, resources and tax dollars on a ridiculous, insane, grandiose idea of a high-speed rail, why not put our efforts forward to resources and money and a better concept of maybe supporting our veterans, building a veterans' shelter here in Fresno, a homeless shelter? How about reducing the homeless, homelessness of our veterans in Fresno? These tax dollars that are being spent is a waste of our money. At least two of you that I know of sitting on this city council are veterans. If not for our men and women who've served in uniform, shed their blood and sacrificed, you wouldn't have the luxury of sitting where you're sitting. Help stop wasting our taxpayer dollars and our resources. Let's put this to better use. Let's take some of this money that the feds are handing out, some of them are tax, tax dollars, and let's start building homeless shelters for our veterans and taking care of the men and women that have taken care of us.
Thank you, sir. Next is Sherilyn Smith. And after Sherilyn will have Isaac Camarino. Good, yeah, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yes, I want to say that you are in conflict if you were to pass this resolution with the resolution passed by the county. And I think things are always much more effective when you're in unison, obviously. And my concern as, I'm here as an individual because there was such short notice on this, and I'll wait, I'll wait until I have everyone's attention. Okay. Are there such notice, short notice on this that I, you know, I just found out about it. So I'm here as an individual. I didn't have time to talk to other people. I'm a member of the Sierra Club. I'm a member of many environmental organizations. And I'm here to point out an environmental reason why you should be in unison with the county on this and why they should be concerned about enforcing their general plan in environmental issues as you should. Mr. Baines, I understand I need this to be working, please. So I hope the clock can be stopped for just a second. Oh, I see. The clock is moving. Okay. Well, I need you to understand, this, I understand rather, is in your district, Mr. Baines, the municipal service center. I want you to know that right across the street from that, I took this picture on June, June fourteenth, where there are these mounds of dirt supposedly being used for berms for high-speed rail ostensibly. And that's the amount of warning to the public, potential hazardous materials. Keep out, no trespassing. There is no fence, except a very slight portion around there. And this was on June eleventh. Fast forward to, I mean, July, June fourteenth, fast forward to June eleventh, and this is what we have. Notice that vehicle on the, on the sidewalk? No fence. I saw two adults walking right by those mounds on that property, obviously not noticing the signs. I only counted three. They're only a few feet high. What is going on here? I have a reliable source who has told me and I, and because I don't do this for a living, I don't get paid for it. It's up to you to look into this, to verify. I understand that dirt is being hauled in from Kalinga to be used for berms under the high-speed rail. We're talking a major area that has known contamination from oil drilling, fracking and formerly asbestos mining. And we need to know if mounds of dirt that are being treated in that way, not wetted down, not covered with anything, right by our freight lines, whether or not valley fever might be present. I urge you to test those mounds of dirt before you make any decision. It's one more example of incompetence and negligence on the part of the High-Speed Rail Authority. I ask you to please take the time to consider this carefully before you endorse something that has already proven itself to be on the downhill and failing. There is very little chance that this thing will be completed at the moment. And finally...
Ma'am, I think you need to wrap it up. Your, your time has expired.
Yes. Lastly, though, there was mentioned in the only article I read of a maintenance facility coming to Fresno as part of this resolution, but also reference to maybe outside of Fresno. Well, that makes it relevant for me to say, what is that gravel mine all about in Madera? Because Madera has been the only other place that's been mentioned as a possible maintenance facility. There's a lawsuit out there called the TransDEF lawsuit about to be heard. Please look it up, T-R-A-N-S-D-E-F, about the use of concrete alone is enormous and it's enough to offset any environmental gains from this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next is Isaac Camarino. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Isaac Camarino. I live at six, zero, six, six, North Flora, Fresno, California. And again, I represent, I'm actually the co-chairman of the Central Valley Coordinators Association, which are due, which does the training for the apprentices in the trades. I've been full support of the project from the outset because basically this is the Hoover Dam of our time. This is basically, we're coming out of the worst economic time in the last seven to eight years. Okay, seven to eight years since, oh, actually affected our trades in oh-nine. Okay? We, we've lost a lot of personnel due to the downturn. We've lost a lot of key individuals. A lot of individuals did retire through the trades, but these are retiring out of good careers. What, what I've seen just from the beginning back four or five years ago, this is back four or five years, even when we started talking about high-speed rail. They started talking about training individuals and we did. We started training individuals through pre-apprenticeship, through Fresno County Jump Start. I'm talking about veterans. We were training, especially targeting veterans that were unemployed in this, in the trades. And we were already putting individuals already work three to four years ago, just because of the high-speed rail, talking about the high-speed rail. Okay? These individuals are currently working. We've got a first graduating individual working five years in the trade, next year gone through these pre-apprenticeship programs. These, this whole high-speed rail has burned educational information to individuals that never thought of trades as a viable career. Okay? These are viable careers. I'm an example of an individual that went through Fresno State for a couple of years, had to start a career. Now I'm going to be retiring at age of fifty-six with a, with a pension of about nine thousand dollars a month in my trade. I've been doing the trade for thirty years. I'm going to have it thirty-five years in the trade. These are viable careers in construction. Not only the construction careers, but the careers that's going to be ongoing. So I'm in full support of you, of this resolution and supporting the high-speed rail. And I thank you and I commend you doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. That's the last card I have. I had seen another card coming up. Good afternoon and the microphone is yours. With your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Leigh Anne Eager and I'm the president and CEO of the Economic Development Corporation. Honey, work right over here at nine, oh, six, N Street. We heard a lot today about jobs and about opportunities and about the things that this could bring to our community and to Fresno. And I think all of those things are important. Absolutely. The jobs that this is going to bring for us, we've heard all about those. We're starting to train for those. We're looking at Fresno State to fill those. The contracts that are being filled currently by a lot of our local people in working on these. The, the maintenance facility is absolutely that, that, that goal that we're going for. And there are ten different sites still in competition for those. But for me, it's really more important. I'm sorry. Sorry. California has always been that place. That's the, the place that every place in the country looks for innovation, right? California is that place that is the new place to, to start businesses and for entrepreneurs. The Central Valley has never really been part of that. We've sort of been that island unto ourselves and, and the people look at Cali- We've sort of been that island unto ourselves, and the people look at California, and as I travel around the world, and those of you who are Facebook friends with me, you know I do, and I talk to people, and they say, "Oh, you're from California. You must be San Francisco or Los Angeles." And through the years, and I've said Fresno, and they said, "What is that?" Now is that time that all that changes for us. Now is that moment that we can look at and say, "We have something here that we're going to be a part of." Now is that moment that we, as leaders, stand up and say, "We're not going to let people do this to us. We're going to be a part of this." And we're not only going to be a part of this, we're going to lead it. We've never had that chance before, never. And I've lived here for 60 years, I'll go ahead and say that, and been waiting, and waiting, and waiting for things to change in my community, and they never have. And I'm not saying that this is the end-all, because I don't think it is. And I'm not saying that it's a perfect project, because I don't think it is. And those of you who know me know I fight every day to make sure that this is a better project than it was the day before. And there are many things that we need to do as a community to make sure that this project runs as it's supposed to be, that we spend the money like we're supposed to spend it, that we take care of our businesses as we should. We should be fighting every day to make sure that that happens. But we shouldn't be fighting as a community against the project, because this is our chance. This is our chance to be connected from here to San Francisco and the Bay Area and be able to get those businesses back and forth. This is that chance for us to be connected to Los Angeles and San Diego, where we never were before. We have this one chance to stand up and be leaders, and it's time for you to do that, too. And I appreciate the resolution and your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see more people coming, and I see the card. By the way, you Fresno State students, thanks for being here. Get back to class, get those As, all right?
And somebody has to get back to me about my shirt.
Good afternoon. If you could give us your name...
I'm Connie Brooks, and we have businesses in Fresno. And I just want to mention that this project affects a lot of businesses. They had to close down around 600 businesses, and we had to move because of it, very expensive. And what the peer group says, I mean, I mean, nobody uses the railroad that's already here, and we're going to build another railroad. And in fact, the railroad that's going to be built is, it doesn't even include the train. Doesn't include the train, and it's not high-speed. So I think the whole thing is a sham, and I can't believe that we would continue with something that is totally different than the law was written. It's way exceeded the cost. Even the Democrats in Sacramento are getting smart that the cost, it's not there, the money to pay for this project is not there. I'll read you what the peer review said. It says, "We cannot overemphasize the fact that moving ahead in the HR project without credible sources of adequate funding, without a definitive business model, without a strategy to maximize the independent utility and value to the state, and without appropriate management resources represents an immense financial risk on the part of the state of California." And at this time, the peer review cannot recommend that legislature approve the appropriation of the bond proceeds for the project. And by the way, they will never get any money from the nation, from the national DC, because there just will not be any money coming forward, because they know what a sham it is. And also, going through Tulare, I mean, it's cutting all the ranches in half. These people are losing their livelihood, and they purposely went right through a rendering plant. There's a plant where they kill 600 animals a day for the dairies out there, and I use it. When my horse died, I had to call them up, pay 350, whatever. But you know what? If you bury the animal yourself, it's like a $10,000 fine. So this rendering plant, it's almost like they took it out on purpose. They could have moved it 100 feet. They want the people out of the valley, and that's what the whole point of this project is. And I just think, please don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Titalian, yes, he waving your card. Come on down. I'd love to have your comments. Name and address for the record, please. Thank you, sir.
My name is Cliff Titalian. I'm a resident of Fresno, and I'm here to speak in, in support of the resolution sponsored by Councilman Member Baines. You know, I want to start out by telling you something that comes to my mind that I used to hear from my father. Pay now or pay later. And that's on the money side of it. We don't live in a perfect world, and acknowledgement and recognition of all the comments that we've heard. That's why we have the formalities of the law and such controls as the EIR. There's always risks to everything that we do. If you look at the growth of Fresno, I can tell you from a personal experience, I've got a little project going on downtown, very, very, very small by comparison, but to any of us citizens, it's a substantial amount of money. And every day, I live with the risk and address the pain in controlling the risks of cost overruns and delivering the product on time. We can't grow, and this community can't grow in a quality-like manner without taking risks. Now let me switch the topic for a minute. I'm not going to say that the state of California has done a real good job in telling the story and truly educating people as to the long-term benefits and henceforth why certain people under the leadership that has brought this forward have taken a position to put their political career on the line, to spend taxpayers' money, to interfere with farming and to interfere with horse trails. But the fact of the matter is, if you go, if you look at Europe and you look at the transportation systems in Europe, we've got a long ways to go to catch up. Here in the United States, in the 40s, the big automakers, through the political lobbies, got rid of the light rail, including in this community. And now, unforeseeably, back then, population has grown, activities have become much more intense, and so much so, going to my comment about pay now or pay later, in communities like Los Angeles and the greater metro areas, San Diego, LA, anybody can drive through those communities and see there's no more right-of-way left to take. And when you think about the disruption of commerce, and when you think about the disruption of traffic, and potentially disabling people in those communities from being able to go to and from work, it could actually wind up being a cost far greater than paying today. I applaud the state legislature and the federal support in this resolution in support of moving our community forward. I want to go to one last topic, and I'll be done.
Please wrap it up, sir.
I spoke here before you, not too long ago, about growing our community and elevating the quality of what we develop. We've been, as a community, blessed with a gift. Mistakes will be made, but the gift to this community is going to bring a transportation system that brings and allows us to attract from two of the greatest and most powerful work pools in the area, San Francisco and LA, and in the world. It will allow our community to grow economically, and that's our payback. We should embrace it, and I thank you for your time and support of this resolution.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the community wish to come forward now? This is the opportunity. Good afternoon, sir. Give us your name and address, if you would.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Dave Herb, 2890 Huntington Boulevard. Didn't plan to speak on this issue this afternoon, but listening to the debate, I feel compelled. I want to tell you about the fact that a couple days ago, I was doing some shopping, and I bumped into a gentleman at one of our local shopping centers who was trying to get signatures for a petition to defund high-speed rail and to build dams instead. Well, despite the fact that I'm a long-term member of the Sierra Club, I could probably support funds to build dams, because in the middle of a drought that's lasted for several years, I recognize we need to conserve and manage those resources, because they are the lifeblood of our ecology and our economy. But I would argue that the economic drought that we have been living with for the last, since I've been in the valley, which is about 40 years, has gone on even longer and is even more severe. And although there is no silver bullet to solve any one problem, this high-speed rail and the jobs that it brings with construction and operation that will go into the future of this community is the surest way to move this city into the 21st century, and I strongly encourage you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else elect to come forward? Now's the opportunity. Please join us, sir. If you give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, council members. Oh, excuse me. Good afternoon, council members and President Carpeolio. My name is Robert Morrissey. I live at 3619 North Hazel Avenue. I'm a Californian, and I like to drive. And my wife used to like to take the train, but she loved Amtrak. She saw nothing wrong with it. It got her there on time. I've always wondered why we didn't, we don't put the money into Amtrak instead and improve its service. I believe the economy is in terrible shape. We're going to see Europe with all of its influx of foreigners who don't seem to want to be there and want to change it. We're going to see the euro dollar going down, I believe, and Japan also. We have about a $120 trillion debt, if you add everything up, fund-funded liabilities. That's 120 trillion, whereas Japan has 230 trillion. So I don't see a good picture ahead, and for us to be spending money, just my whole frame of mind is that we should be waiting until we can build that train here in America instead of in China, where that money is being used to build ships and planes that are going to be coming at us and putting our future generations into wars with, I believe, a war with China possibly. Iran is nothing. We have bigger enemies, much bigger enemies than Iran, even though we're arming them with nuclear power. So I just, I can't see it. I can't see the high-speed rail. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else from the public want to discuss this item or bring forth an opinion? This is the opportunity to do so. Please come up, and again, name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Frank Escavell, and I'm going to do something I rarely do, which is to quote directly from the gospel. And the only reason why I do this is because the high-speed rail issue came up just a couple of weeks ago at Sunday service. And when I heard this passage, it speaks directly to what's happening with high-speed rail. And it's regarding great crowds were traveling with Jesus, and He turned around to address them. And Jesus said, "Which of you wishing to construct a tower does not first sit down and calculate the cost to see if there is enough for its completion? Otherwise, after laying the foundation and finding himself unable to finish the work, the onlookers should laugh at him and say, 'This one began to build but did not have the resources to finish.'" The point being, can you say with any certainty that the resources are there to finish this project? Everything that I've researched and heard and read regarding this project, the resources aren't there. They started off with the proposition, whatever it was, a few years ago. It was only supposed to be $8 billion. Then it skyrocketed up to over about $120 or $130 billion, and there is a lot of outcry in the public when it went from eight to well over $100 billion. So they walked it back, and now it's somewhere around $65, $68 billion. Is that where it ends? Is that going to be enough? Or are they still going to have to go back to the public and ask for more money? I just don't, I'm not convinced. And I don't know what your background is, as far as your faith is concerned, but please listen to the sage advice that Jesus had 2,000 years ago. "This one began to build but did not have the resources to finish." Can you say you have the resources to finish? If you don't, don't start it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and talk about this? This is the opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Our screen is full, so Member Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. First thing I wanted to bring up was AB 2847, which is currently sitting on Governor Brown's desk. AB 2847 was brought forward by Assemblymember Jim Patterson, who represents the north part of Fresno. And this was the most interesting piece of legislation, I think, that went through this cycle. It received no comment and 100% support in committee. It received no comments and 100% support on the floor of the State Assembly. It went over to the Senate, where nobody said anything. Everybody just voted for it. And now we're waiting for Governor Brown to sign it. And what it does is, it creates oversight of the High-Speed Rail Authority, implementing two recommendations from, recommendations made by the Legislative Analyst's Office. Number one, the authority has to provide specific details about the cost, the scope, and the schedule of each project segment, and it also requires that business plans include the cost of borrowing associated with the project as a whole, and also for the construction of the various segments. Democrats are beginning to panic, and Democrats who have traditionally supported this project are beginning to turn on the project. That's because it's in trouble, and it isn't, it absolutely is not going to work and is going to create a problem for taxpayers for generations to come. Just procedurally, I'm going to vote no today, because the City of Fresno's policy is that the City of Fresno has never opposed the project. The City of Fresno, just by its actions and by our votes here on the dais, has gone along with high-speed rail's plans to redo overpasses and grade separations and improvements to our local infrastructure. And because the City of Fresno and our mayor has been very supportive of high-speed rail, I think that it would be appropriate if council members would submit individual letters of support for this project, because we have voted many, many times as a council to validate the work that the High-Speed Rail Authority has done in our community and in our city simply by giving them permission to do, you know, conduct their construction projects within the City of Fresno. So just procedurally, I think that there's no need for the resolution today, but since we're, since it's here and since it's on the agenda, you know, we heard from a number of speakers, and speakers were very articulate, and speakers made a number of great points. However, we're in a bubble here in the City of Fresno. We're in a bubble in the Central Valley, because in points beyond, in the Bay Area, where the major newspapers oppose this project, and down in LA, where a number of major newspapers oppose this project, none of the speakers today talked about reducing greenhouse gases. None of the speakers today talked about climate change. None of the speakers today talked about the importance of moving people. I didn't hear anyone talking about getting cars off the road, because that's... I didn't hear anyone talking about getting cars off the road because that's what they're talking about in LA and San Francisco. But in the bubble that is the Central Valley in which we live, high-speed rail has become a make-work project. That's what it is. That's what the speakers spoke about, and that's what it is for us in the Central Valley bubble, is a make-work project. And I don't oppose people working. I don't oppose people from our building trades working. There's dignity in all work, and definitely, you know, with the high unemployment that we have in the valley, I can see why it would be so important for folks to look for job generators and ways to create jobs. In the case of high-speed rail, though, unfortunately, that's what it is. Just if you look at the political landscape, though, the next, one of the people who could be the next governor of the state of California, Gavin Newsom, is a very progressive Democrat. He opposes the project. There are numbers of progressive assembly members in the California State Assembly and the Senate who oppose the project. So people, the opposition to this project is moving just out of conservative circles and into the more progressive circles as more and more people wake up to the disaster that this project has become, as it's gone from an original $6 billion ballot initiative up to $68 billion, down to $34 billion, as it originally was supposed to go from the Bay Area to Los Angeles, and now it's been switched. It was going to go to Shafter. Folks in private industry, this business would have already gone belly up. It's a catastrophe, and the only reason why it continues is because it so far has received lots of taxpayer money, way over and above what the voters of our state originally approved. And it seems to be surviving in the hopes that it will continue to get taxpayer money from Washington DC. But if we look at the political landscape, if Newsom is elected governor and Trump is elected president, this project is not going to get money from Sacramento, and it's not going to get money from Washington DC, as I'm sure that Gavin Newsom has other plans for cap-and-trade money. You know, I wanted to thank Sherilyn Smith for coming. I had the opportunity to sit next to her at an event during the spring, and my eyes were awakened to a lot of the environmental concerns that exist with this project and how it could take up to 70 years to mitigate the environmental interference that's caused by the immense pouring of concrete and the dust clouds and how Governor Brown, who calls people who don't necessarily see the environment the way he does, he calls us troglodytes, calls us names. But he also waived the sequer process for this project to allow as much pollution into the air as he humanly possibly can. So I wanted to thank you for coming, Sherilyn, and it's a good opportunity to sit and meet with her. She opened my eyes to many things. I just went on Southwest Airlines just now, and I'm wrapping things up. But you can fly from Oakland to LAX for $59, and you can do it in 90 minutes. And, well, who said not in Fresno? The project was designed to get people from the Bay Area to LA. And so if you can fly on Southwest from Oakland to LAX for $59, I don't envision business people taking this train. And the other issue I have with it is that it's going to be very expensive, and the constituents who I represent won't be able to afford it. The people who live in the neighborhoods in my district aren't going to have the hundreds of dollars it takes to get a family of four to Disneyland. Well, they changed it. It's not going down there anymore, but it's still, won't be able to compete with the infrastructure that the free market has put in place, which is the airplanes. The last thing I wanted to end with is that in Spain, a construction firm that's interested in this project has included a warning to rail officials with the bid that they submitted. And they noted that government funds would probably be needed to run the system. And their research showed only three, only three high-speed trains out of 111 high-speed rail lines in the entire world function without subsidy. And so what I wanted to close by saying was, I've heard a number of comments from good people in this room, people who I've agreed with and worked with many times in the past, to stand up and be a leader, to, you know, how if you're not with us, you're against us, that somehow by voting against this resolution today or somehow by opposing high-speed rail, that I oppose people, I oppose jobs, I oppose families, I oppose prosperity, I oppose Fresno, that somehow there's something wrong with me because I don't support high-speed rail. I couldn't disagree with that more. I think that I am acting in the best interest of the taxpayer, who is going to have to float this horrible investment for generations and generations to come. In a state where our infrastructure is already falling apart and so very troubled, we don't need a project like this to take tax dollars. We've been called troglodytes, deplorables. The nominee of my party has ugly names for people. It concerns me that we exist in a time where to disagree with someone earns you an awful nickname and a put-down, when all that's wrong is that you just disagree. And so I disagree. I am voting no on this today. I'm urging a no vote, and I have no nickname for people who are going to vote yes today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Member Brandal, let's see if you can top that, Member Brandal.
Well, I'm glad that he went first. He actually, right, he actually spoke to a lot of issues that I was going to bring up. So I'm going to, gosh, Council President, I'm going to try and be brief. I mean, it's going to be tough, right? There's a lot that I want to say, but there's really a lot that I've said over the years on this topic, and really, not much has changed. I want to thank everybody who spoke, whether you spoke in for or against it. Oddly enough, Frank Escavell, that scripture quote was a quote that I used in response to Mayor Swearengen when I was just Joe Citizen, okay? So I do appreciate, it reminded me six, seven years ago, that scripture about a person preparing a project. You sit down, you think about the project, you figure out how you're going to pay for the project first, but I don't think the Rail Authority has read that passage yet. I want to talk about an article that came out this week in the Weekly Standard, and it's called, it's written by Charlotte Allen. She's one of their writers. The Weekly Standard's a national, you could even say international publication. It's called Bullet Train to Nowhere: The Ultimate California Boondoggle. In this article, and it's a very lengthy article, if you haven't read it yet, whatever side you're on, you should read it. You'd be surprised, the things that she doesn't criticize and the things that she does criticize. It may cause you to think about some of the issues, although really, Councilman Baines, I think most of us are locked into our positions. And so I'm going to tread really lightly on my good friends today, like Councilman Baines, like Councilmember Soria, LeAnn Agar, who I have the most of respect for, trying to get jobs for our valley. But I do have to say some things. In this article, Charlotte talks about time delays, cost overruns. She mentioned current polling says 52% of Californians don't even approve of the project anymore. Inside the article, she questions the route. Oliver and I were on the phone probably a couple weeks ago talking about it, and I noticed one thing that he said about my position that I thought, you know, I've really never heard him say that before. It's not really true, which was that, you know, Steve, I think you're just against the project. You see it as a progressive project, and the truth, and she brings up a part of this, Oliver, that I wanted to respond to you even that day. I thought about it after our phone call, is many of us who are critical of this project are actually not even against high-speed rail trains, okay? So to say that we're just, to make it sound like we're just, you know, like we want the dinosaurs to reappear and we want to live in the past, that's not really our position, okay? I actually would have been really interested in a train that connected major, major population centers like Los Angeles and San Francisco along I-5. That is addressed in this article, and for whatever reason, really, when you read the article, there's a lot of political reasons in the beginning why I-5 wasn't selected and the valley was selected. Very interesting. But here we are in the middle of the valley, building this train track, and all of her objections and the red flags that she raises are things many of us have said for years. But it's really interesting that a national publication just this week is still criticizing. It's difficult to be critical when you're in your home field, right? It makes my job 10 times harder because these people are trying, they're my friends, and they're also, in their minds, trying to improve our community, and I have to give them that their motivations are good. So I have to respect that, but I still have to make my criticisms, okay? In this article, Congressman Jeff Denham from the North Valley has mentioned, he talks about many people are being bought out because of the price of the contracts, you know, and honestly, guys, we had people from the sheet metal workers' union here today speaking, the other guy from the other trade saying this is the Hoover Dam of our time. We get it. You guys are getting paid. I totally dig that. I understand. You guys made the contract. You're going to be building this, so you're a course for it. But the rest of us, we know that. I mean, we know how that works. So I get that support for it. And even, you know, even my fellow Republicans, Oliver, are getting contracts for this. Now, these four college students had to leave early, and I wish they could have stayed, but, you know, and they were all engineering students, and I totally fantastic that local engineers are getting these contracts. And with that, you know, the project gains local support, as Councilman Olivier said, as a jobs creation program, more than any type of analyzing the big-picture project of high-speed rail. So I have to do that. Now, many of you have brought up the point, so I'm not going to belabor that, but the budget on this project is nowhere to be found. Now, you guys are citizens of the City of Fresno. If we came to you every year and said, you know, we're going to hire 50 new police officers, but we only have money for six of them, I mean, how long would you put up with us doing that, okay? The budget for this project is nowhere to be found, and just two months ago, we had the Chair of the Rail Authority, Dan Richard, was here at the podium, and he talked about the amount of money that they have is just enough money to get the project moving in the Central Valley. There's a lot of reasons for that I won't go into, but the budget's nowhere to be found. And then, and then I wanted to talk about, and I'm actually drawing to a conclusion, which is relatively quickly because many of you know this is one of my favorite subjects, but, so if it passes council today, my guess is it passes 4-2. Councilman Brand's not here. If it passes 4-2, that's 66% of council. If Brand was here, it might be 57%. The people show the state of California is moving away from this project, but the people that are getting paid to continue the work are all for it, so the project kind of clicks along relatively slowly. Now, here's one thing that is very important to me. Jobs in our valley and jobs in the Central Valley. And I do serve with LeAnn on EDC, and we talk about job creation all the time. And this resolution, Oliver, is about the big-picture project, but inside of it, you've talked about the need for the heavy maintenance facility and your desire to locate that in the City of Fresno.
And everything else.
And manufacturing of trains. I mean, this guy's got a big vision, and those of you that are against, you know, you should probably sit down with him. He's a good guy. So, and he, like me, really wants to bring a lot of jobs to the City of Fresno. I want to play a clip of when Dan Richard, the Chair of the Authority, was here just two months ago, because I asked him, you know, Dan, I even said, speaking of myself in the third person, which is unusual, but I said, "Dan, we even have some crazy council members who have put up, you know, billboards on Freeway 99. Are you going to hold, are you going to hold that against us, that some of us are critical of the project? Are you going to hold that against the City of Fresno?" And right here was his response, Todd. If you'd play that up on the screen for us, please.
Liz, and Councilmember, let me just say one other thing to you. I appreciated the way you said that, that you hoped that we were big enough. We're adults here. I understand where you've been on this program. I hope you can see that in the way I've tried to engage with you, it's with respect for your views and any differences that we have. And this is not something where, even if you go out tomorrow, and I hope you won't, and say, "I'm not convinced. I want to, you know, shut this down," that we're not going to sit there and play petty political games. And when Henry T. Perre was in the Assembly, I sat in his office, I looked at him, and I said, "I will not trade the heavy maintenance facility for some kind of political advantage." I looked at him. I made that promise to him. I'm repeating it in public to you now.
Okay. So to add one more sentence of context to that, the Chairman of the Rail Authority is not going to just look, okay, wait a second, only 66% of Fresno City Council supports this, although we have some huge supporters up here with me, and wait a second, wait, Madera's got 82% of their council supports it, or Kern has 87%. He's telling you that he's going to make his decision on where the heavy maintenance facility goes. He's going to make a business decision. He just said it. You heard him. And I think, Mr. Bennett, you were the one that brought up, so at the end of the day, what we're doing up here just becomes political, and is it really meaningful, okay? So, look, I had some other comments to say. I wanted to add, when Dan Richards was here, we had just had the first initial failure of the cap-and-trade auction system. And I said, "Dan, I'm going to be looking. What happens in the August one?" He goes, "I understand." August now has come and gone. We've had the second failure of the cap-and-trade auction system, which is one of the current ways of budgeting for this project, right? So, look, there's a lot of problems with this project. When it's under this amount of problem, I myself, I've got to stick with my gut instinct, which says it's not for me, it's not for a lot of the people that I represent and the people that I've heard from and a lot of the people that helped me put me in this chair today. So I'm going to be voting no on the resolution today, and I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Member Brandal. Next is Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Baines, for bringing this forward. I think that it is important that, as leaders of this great city, that we stand up and support this project because I do agree with some of the comments made, like LeAnn. For the first time in decades, has the City of Fresno and just the valley in general received the type of investment that our residents need and that we deserve here? We paid taxpayer money like any other region, and it is great to see that for the first time in decades. They recognize that there is a need here and that there's opportunity to build this type of project. I am very supportive of the project because of what it will do, what it is doing to our community. I had an opportunity a few months ago to take the tour of the various sites of where the construction is happening, actually looking at the real jobs, the impacts directly of people being trained and then having the full-time paying job. I also heard about the indirect benefits. Just in touring, I think Diana Gomez took us, and she mentioned Tudor Perini, a local business or a local company, was awarded part of the contract. And so part of their contract from that, they actually bought a fleet of trucks. And guess where those trucks were bought? They were bought here from a local car lot. And so that means that we are seeing triple benefits of these tax dollars that are being invested in this project. I am for it because I am for a future, for a better future, not only for myself, but for the generations that will come. I know that this project will also help revitalize our inner city. Because of the investments already made, we will continue to see infrastructure investments that will revitalize downtown. I think that it's important because if we don't have I think that it's important, because if we don't have a downtown that is revitalized, then our city really, you know, doesn't have the true benefit of what other big metros have. I also wanna just make sure that some misinformation is corrected. I know that folks said that CEQA doesn't have to happen. I actually texted Diana to really find out. She is our lead person here from High Speed Rail. And they do have to comply both with CEQA and NEPA. So for the record, I just wanna make sure that, you know, when information is being provided, that we're being accurate and that we are being truthful about what the project is. I also am support because I do believe that our nation and California should be a leader. We already have seen countries like France, Spain, China, Japan, leading on this issue. And High Speed Rail has brought a tremendous amount of benefits. It has pulled regions from isolation, ignited growth, created tourist destinations, and I think those are all benefits that we can really partake and our residents benefit from. I know that my colleague said that he would have maybe particularly liked to have seen it go through the I-5. Well, again, that leaves Fresno behind. We can't afford to leave Fresno behind. Fresno needs to be at the forefront, and I am proud to say that our current governor, that our leadership are still supportive of this project. They continue to invest the dollars because they do believe and they have a vision for the state of California, for us being a true leader in investing in our future generations. It's not about us today. It's about our kids tomorrow. And that's what we're building, our future. I know that our founding fathers and the generations before took risk, risks like some of our business members that are here supportive of this project, that we need to take to build a better future. And when we're talking about subsidies, yeah, we have to realize that public transportation, any project will be subsidized. Our airports are subsidized, our roads are subsidized. So let's not think that just this project is, you know, gonna run on subsidies. All public transit projects are subsidized. Let's talk to, you know, Bruce. He could tell us about our bus rapid transit, about our current fax system. You know, it's subsidized. No other, there's no public transit that will not be, have to receive funding to really operate and be maintained. But it's a benefit to our community. There's a lot that comes from it. It provides people a mode of transportation. It connects, it will connect us to bigger cities. It will allow us to grow, and it will create, I think, innovation. We are seeing great things happening in downtown with Bitwise and with these young folks that are here from our community, that have the education, that have decided to come back to invest in our own city. And so I will stand very proud in support of this resolution, because I know what it means for our community today, I know what it will mean for it tomorrow and for generations to come. I wanna be on the right side of the issue, and I am very confident that I am on the right side of history in that, you know, decades from now, we're gonna look back and be proud to say, "I was part of someone that supported this great project that has made our country a better place for all of us." And so I wanna thank again my council colleague, Oliver Baines, for taking, for his leadership on this issue. We're all committed to ensuring that our residents here in the city of Fresno benefit from good-paying jobs, that this resolution also shows that there is strong support so that we do get this maintenance facility that will mean thousands of more jobs. I did have the opportunity last year to travel abroad to see and talk to people in the Spanish government, to talk about the benefits and how they've been able to run their system. And it is very unfortunate that many folks here locally do not see the greatness that we do have. Earlier, a few months ago, we met with some international potential investors or people that are interested, because they see something here in Fresno. And it is great that they have the vision to see what, you know, that some of us don't see here. But I am proud to say that I am voting, because I do believe that we can create a better future for all our residents here in the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Olivier? You wanted to do some further discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Soria, for your remarks that I've got in the LA Times right now, that the state High Speed Rail Authority has repeatedly asserted that it will not need a subsidy, and that every high-speed rail system in the world operates without taxpayer assistance. And that was one of the questions that I asked him when he was here, and he looked me in the eye, and he assured me that this system will not need subsidy. And so I just, I wanted to bring that forward, you know, in the effort to make sure that everything we're reporting from the desk is accurate today, and that, you know, I agree with you that I'm here to fight for future generations as well. And I can appreciate anyone here who says that it's important for future generations to live in a safe, clean city that's connected to other cities, where the air quality is acceptable and healthy, and, but I'm also, I don't oppose any of those things, but I also am fighting for future generations. Because despite Mr. Richard's assurance that it will not operate, that it won't need public money, I do believe that it will follow the same model as the rest of the high-speed rail systems in this world, and it's going to need oodles and oodles and oodles of money. You agreed a moment ago. And that's money that I think our kids and our children's children could use for other projects to make this a better community and a better state. So we're both fighting for the same thing. We just have different ways to get there. And I don't, and I reject Mr. Richard's assertion that subsidy won't be needed for this project. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next member is Member Baines.
Thank you, Council President. And I introduced the item, and while, you know, my mind wasn't all there when I first introduced it, but most of you don't know, I was coming from an Air Board meeting, and my mind was a little oogly-woogly, as Clint would just say. Oodles and oodles, yeah. Oh, my mind was a little oodles and oodles.
Air deprived.
But I, yeah, air deprived. But I do wanna respond to a couple of things I heard from, a couple inaccuracies I heard from some folks that spoke. But first, I wanna commend my colleague and friend Steve Brandow for what I thought were very thoughtful remarks and objection to High Speed Rail. I wanna be clear that I don't necessarily think that we should not be questioning certain things about the project. That, I think we should. That is fair. And your questions are fair, and your concerns are fair. Ultimately, I think we should be supportive of it because of where it's starting and the opportunities that exist. But I don't want anyone to mistake the fact that we should not ask those questions as thoughtful legislators, and I think that your approach is very thoughtful, so I wanna commend you for that. And then I wanna pivot directly to my friend and colleague, who I do lots of battle with, Councilmember Olivier. And I do wanna really correct you on a couple of things. First of all, subsidy, because I know you pushed back up to correct Councilmember Soria, and you're really incorrect in your framing of that. So throughout the world, the operations don't have subsidy. So I think that the word subsidy has been mischaracterized a few different places, a few different times. So let me be really clear. The operations of the systems don't require subsidy. If you, they're much like airplanes, where we as taxpayers come in and build the infrastructure for them to exist, that is true. It is a subsidy, like every other transportation system in this country that we subsidize. We will subsidize the infrastructure for High Speed Rail. That's true. Operations are not true. So that is factually incorrect. And I want the public to understand that, because sometimes we hurl these words back and forth, and people can get confused. So I wanna be really clear with you all. We are building transportation infrastructure. We do that in America, and we have for a very long time, going back to the 1860s. We build infrastructure for transportation. Councilmember Soria hit on that in her comments, and your comments, Councilmember Soria, I thought were spot on and beautiful. Americans decided a long time ago that we're okay with creating the best transportation systems in the world, and we pay for them. So if you drove in on a road today, if you took a bus, if you fly on an airplane, we subsidize it. So some of you may not think that we do, but we do. Unfortunately, someone talked about the messaging for High Speed Rail. We didn't do a very good job as supporters in reminding Americans that we already subsidize transportation, and we have for a long time. And this is really no different than that. So let's talk about the alternative, because sometimes we miss what the alternative to a high-speed rail system is. The reason that we are putting forth a high-speed rail system is because of our, the movement of people in California. If you've driven up and down this state, you know that we don't do that well. If you've driven in Southern California, Northern California, you know that the congestion is amazing. So the idea that in about another 20 years, our population will double in this state, the leaders of this state had to say, had to decide, "How are we gonna move people in commerce effectively up and down this state?" Well, a couple of ways you can do it. You can widen the freeways. So you can do that. And as we had a lot of people talk about responsibility for taxpayer dollars and future generations and so forth, we can do that. And we looked at that. And so for all of you that are really, really tax responsible, that costs $700 billion if we just want, $700 billion.
Billion.
Billion with a B. So we can do that. We can just widen the freeways. And actually, that eats up considerably more farmland, for some of you that are interested in farmland. It eats up considerably more farmland than High Speed Rail. It costs 10 times more than High Speed Rail, and it doesn't have any air quality mitigation. I'm glad Clint Olivier brought that up. I'm a fighter for air quality, too, and climate change. It has none of the climate change or air quality benefits. So as taxpayers, I think that unfortunately, the option wasn't put before you of what to choose, because legislators said, "Listen, this is basically a no-brainer. We should not spend $700 billion. Instead, we should spend about a tenth of that to build a train." Yeah, please, you guys should look it up. So I wanted to start my comments there, and just really make sure we're talking about the same thing, because a lot of times, a lot of people hurl things back and forth and don't really have all the facts, and maybe somebody told you something in passing, or you read something inaccurate on Facebook or Twitter, and you repeat it, and sometimes it's not always factual. Like I heard someone get up here a moment ago and say that no one rides Amtrak in this corridor. Yeah, it's like the second highest travel corridor in the country. I don't know where someone heard that from that lives in Fresno, but we gotta do our homework for us here. So we have a very highly-traveled rail system in the Central Valley. As a matter of fact, it's one of the better ones and more traveled ones in the country. That's one of the reasons they decided to start here, because it actually does make sense. Not to say that there are not issues that we should be concerned with, but we do, there are things that make sense here. And the only thing I will really disagree with Councilmember Brandow on is, I apologize for saying that you were just opposed ideologically, because you're right. I did tell Councilmember Brandow that I was fussing at him one day. He was fussing back, "Don't worry." And, yeah, and I told him that he was just ideologically opposed, and that wasn't fair. That really wasn't fair to you, and I apologize for that. We do disagree on High Speed Rail, and we do have qualitative reasons why we disagree. We mostly disagree on where it should have started. He believes it should have gone down I-5, and I believe it should have been here in Fresno for all the reasons that Councilmember Soria stated. So that's our qualitative disagreement. So I heard somebody say that this was a grandiose idea. I heard that. And you are right, whoever said that. I can't remember, because it was a while ago. It is grandiose. Our country was founded on grandiose ideas, starting with the Declaration of Independence. Grandiose. That this little country, some English colonies, felt like they could break away from England. Grandiose. Our country is all about grandiose and big, and big thinking, and doing great things. When we built the interstate highway system, grandiose. And by the way, we didn't know how much that was gonna cost either when we started. The best interconnected highway system in the world exists in the United States of America. Grandiose. The best interconnected intercontinental rail system, grandiose here in America. I could go on about how grandiose we are, but I think we all should be proud of the fact that we're Americans and we have grandiose ideas. That's what our veterans fight for, so we can continue to be grandiose and big and great. We are a great country, and it's because we have those grandiose ideas and we execute them. We finish them. And no, we may not always have every single answer. You're right. Someone quoted a scripture verse, which was a good one to use, but it's not in context of how we built the infrastructure for the entire country. So I know, I'm a Christian, and I love Christ, love God. The way we build infrastructure in America would never line up with that scripture, unfortunately. So I get it, but we are in the 21st century, and we don't have it all figured out from the beginning. So there were a couple of other things I wanted to say, and really, it was probably more along the lines of my good friend down on the other end, who's really in opposition. But I would remind people that have never ridden High Speed Rail, that have never examined it closely about the pricing structures, because I think there was a mention that the prices, no one will be able to afford it. I don't know how many people have ridden High Speed Rail, and I don't know if, I don't know, but it is affordable, and that's why people ride it all over the world. In countries poorer than ours, they ride it all over the world. It's successful in every country it's ever happened. And so for us to think that for some strange reason, in California, which is the eighth largest GDP in the world, this is the only place it wouldn't be successful, is beyond the pale for me. It's beyond the pale why we wouldn't think that Californians would not ride High Speed Rail. And while it may be true that it costs $59 to go from Los Angeles to San Francisco on Southwest Airlines, Southwest Airlines does not come to Fresno. And I am, and unfortunately, I may be being a little parochial with this resolution, because I'm much more worried about Fresno than Los Angeles or the Bay Area. I want us to be able to travel to those places cheaply as well. So I could go on, but I think I've made the point. I certainly respect opposition. I think there is fair criticism to the project, and there should be. It should be thoughtful. It should be factual and accurate, but it should be thoughtful. But I challenge people that live here in Fresno to recognize that it's already happening. And while I can understand the questions and the oppositions, we should want it to be successful, because if it's not successful for us, we're the only city in California that's gonna be torn up with an incomplete line. So why we would want that, I don't know. And I'm not saying if you're in opposition, that's what you want, but I would challenge you to think about the ramifications of this being unsuccessful for us here in Fresno. The ramifications for us here in Fresno, if in fact it is unsuccessful, is much worse than it is anyplace else, which is why I'm bringing the resolution to do everything I can to make sure it is successful. And someone finally mentioned that this was just an outward expression of opinion. I wrote that down. That is true. That is what we do here in this building every Thursday. We take votes that express our opinion. We are policymakers. That's precisely what we do. And today, I hope we express the opinion that we are in favor for the success of High Speed Rail and all of the associated benefits that come with it for us here in Fresno. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Member Quintal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, my comments aren't gonna be as grandiose as my colleague. Well, my comments aren't going to be as grandiose as my colleague, Mr. Baines, but I wanted to just touch on a couple of things, and also, some of the comments that have been made. I know early on, one of my colleagues said that, "Why do we have to have a resolution? Why couldn't we, as councilmembers, send letters of support?" Wanted to remind you that a while back, I asked the same question when a resolution was brought forward regarding the recognizing of a Sikh genocide. I said, "Why couldn't we send letters of support?" So, I guess the question is the same here. Why is it a resolution? But we have a resolution now, but my colleague that brought up, "Why can't we send letters of support?", is the one that wanted the resolution. So, it's kind of like trying to have it both ways, I guess. You know, and then the other part that I heard was that it's political and not meaningful, that type of thing. Well, you know, it's meaningful for me in the sense that it's good paying jobs. And the reason we're up here for is to represent our constituents. And I look and talk to people in the council district, and, you know, for once, I'm seeing a lot of hope that things are getting better, because jobs are being, are starting up now, and people are starting to work, and a lot of those are having to do with this high-speed rail project. And the other question, you know, you've got to look at or ask yourselves, is that if you drive the corridor where the high-speed rail is going, be it along 99 West Fresno, you're seeing a lot of buildings that have been taken down. You're seeing a lot of land, a lot of things that is changing the landscape of our community. And that's got to tell you that this project is well on its way. And I guess, how are you going to stop it? How are you going to stop it? You know, it's unfortunate or unfortunate for those that support it or don't support it, but it just seems that it's pretty much on its way. And so, you know, it gets interesting, because I recall as, many years ago, that there was two sides of a debate when it started on how much a project was going to cost Fresno, and that was the Fulton Mall. And that was very well divided the community. So, those are the, you know, things that we look at in terms of what's the best for the community, because I asked a friend of mine years ago, he's passed away now, but he was a councilman here. I said, "What do you do when there's an issue that you have to vote on, and they're right on both sides? Both sides of the issue are right. What do you do?" He says, "Well, you listen to both sides." He says, "You thank them." He said, "And when all is said and done," he says, "you just pray a little bit, and then you have to determine which one is the best for your community. Which of the two projects, and they're both, they're both good on both sides, which one is going to benefit the most?" Well, this one seems like it's already well on its way and going on, and so, you know, I agree with a lot of the things my colleague, Councilmember Baines has made. I mean, take a drive and drive that corridor, and you'll see a lot of the changes that are going on now. So, that's a decision that we're here to make, so, you know, a lot of the comments from my colleagues, they're both right. So, we'll see how it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, the screen is clear, and I apologize if I repeat a few of the things that my colleagues have said. I took some notes, and I want to stay close to those. And I join the comments of my colleagues here that support high-speed rail, but I also respect the comments by those that are opposed to high-speed rail, and the opinions that all of you came forward with today. That's what makes this whole system work. That's what this chamber is all about. That's what we do as electeds. We listen to both sides of any issue, and then we have to make a decision. And that's what we do up here. So, look, folks, you guys fought a good fight. We fought a good fight, but it's inevitable. High-speed rail is here to stay. Just looking around our community, we can see the enormous positive impact it's had on Fresno. And it started right here in Fresno. We're the beginning point of all this that's going to go down in the future, years and years. And eventually, I guess it'll go north and south. But I'm a city councilman for the city of Fresno. I care about this community. I want to do what's right for us, and what I think, based upon the pros and the cons, is best for Fresno. So, I don't think there's any turning back. That's been mentioned earlier. And again, why would we want to turn back? Why would we want to stop now? This is the economic engine, the economic engine that Fresno needs. This will put us on the map, especially the heavy maintenance facility that was addressed. It's a double win if we were fortunate enough to get the high-speed rail heavy maintenance facility. And, you know, I've got to be honest with you too. I was opposed to this project for quite a while. But I kept my mind open. I kept my ears open. I used my thought process the best I could, and I listened to all the pros and the cons and the arguments and everything that goes with it. You know, but I wanted to hear, for me, I wanted to hear from the top brass. I wanted to hear from the top brass of high-speed rail. So, we scheduled a workshop, and my notes show it was on June 23 of 2016. And all of us on this dais had the opportunity to directly confront, confront, and question the Chair, Dan Richard, and the Chief Executive Officer, Jeff Morales. And believe me, we did. I mean, we were confrontational. We were inquisitive. We went through many, many things. And we, as a council, that's our due diligence. That's our responsibility. And I pulled up some notes here that our discussion contained, these are just a few items. Train speeds, ticket costs, travel time, sustainability through completion of the project, project funding, track sharing, cap and trade funds, lawsuits, lawsuits, availability of federal funds, private investment, Chinese investment rumors. I mean, we went through the whole gamut, in my view, of pros and cons on this particular project, and I thank my colleagues for doing that. We had to get it all out on the table. We had to really get to the bottom of this. And at the end of that workshop, I had some remarks that I have in front of me again, and my concluding remarks were based on a chart that I had drawn up here. The chart said myth, it said reality, and it said positive for Fresno. Myth number one, it's never going to get started. Folks, it's well on its way. We all know that. So, that's a myth. However, by starting this project and going forward in Fresno, it has a very positive impact on Fresno. And now, what does that mean? That means dollars. That means jobs. That means economic opportunity. Myth number two I wrote down was, "We can stop the train." Well, we can't stop the train. We all know that, because it's well underway. And again, why would we want to stop something that's not, this is not a detriment to Fresno. How does this hurt Fresno? I can't figure that out. I've heard it's been a detriment to the entire community, and I've heard all that, and I've listened to it, but I've tried to analyze it. And how can it be a detriment if it's going to provide jobs? And we always say that, every political campaign, "Jobs, jobs, jobs." Well, this is the opportunity to bring that forward, to have that creation of jobs, jobs, jobs. And these are not just jobs. These are high-skill jobs. These people that are going to take these jobs from our community will be engaged, as our members here said earlier, pre-apprenticeship programs, apprenticeship programs, other job training, to bring our workforce up to a highest level possible, to earn the most money for those individuals and their families and our communities. Again, this is local people who live here that will also benefit from it. It will increase our tax base. It will help our community grow in a very positive way. The third and final myth that I want to talk about, it's going to have a negative impact on business. And the number that was quoted was, "We have a 90% retention rate." It is disruptive. Everything I've done in my life, there's a tough beginning. You've got to, it's rough, and then you work your way through it. And at the end of the day, I just finished a project on the coast. At the end of the day, I'm looking at it going, like, I can't believe it's done. But I went through hell, quite frankly, to get there. And that's part of the course of construction and doing things, and being innovative and grandiose, as my colleague has said. So, with that, a 90% retention rate, to me, that's very impressive. But I'm a little bit of a skeptic. So, I'm going, "Oh, really? Okay, how can I confirm or deny that?" So, I know the Matoian family, they own OK Produce. OK Produce has been here for years, decades, decades. And I remember hearing all these horror stories, that they were just on the other side of the overpass. You could see all their trucks, they're on a rail spur. This is the end of the world for them. And I'm thinking, "Wow, this is pretty serious stuff." So, I went on a tour, a tour recently. The Matoian family, they were ecstatic about the move. And again, everybody was very reluctant in the beginning, but now they have a final product, and it's so impressive. And I'm sure, if any of you want to confirm this and take that tour, they're so proud of that facility, they'll take you there, and you'll probably have to leave in about five hours, want to, because they will continue. I mean, they're so proud of this facility. So, according to The Sun, quote, "It was the best thing that could have ever happened to us." So, those are part of the things that I went through in my analysis, my due diligence, my homework. And for me, the deliberative process is complete. We've taken the proper steps to examine high-speed rail. We had a workshop. The top people, the very top, came here, and I appreciated their candor in front of this body. We asked those tough questions, and they answered those questions directly with all candor. So, to me, dispelling many of the myths, so that my final comment is this. To me, in the final analysis, my vote of support will secure economic benefits and jobs for my, our community. So, I will be supporting the resolution. The screen is clear, and we have a motion and a second. Are those in favor? Should you, electronic vote, make it easier? Should it? So, those in favor, the resolution would be a yes vote. Those opposed would be a no vote. Okay. All right, we'll try again, please. The resolution passes. Four, two, Members Brandau and Olivier in opposition. Member Brand is absent. Thank you all very much. Appreciate all the concern and comments that we went through for this particular resolution. Okay. Back to the agenda. Next is the contested consent item. We're a little bit behind, and that's Item 1I, and that was pulled by Member Soria, who wanted to make a few comments, I believe.
So, I just pulled, I'm actually in full support of this item, but I just had a few questions and just comments. So, I know that, and I've had conversations with my council colleague, Baines, about the center and the fact that they have a great nonprofit helping with really the operating this neighborhood center, which is key to that area. And today, what we're doing essentially is, I think, maybe you can speak to the item and all in terms of what we're doing. I have just a couple of questions and comments about this issue, this item.
I'm Manuel Inetto. I'm the Parks Director, and I'm here to answer any questions regarding the agreement with West Fresno Family Resources Center to operate the Mariela Brown Neighborhood Center. And with me today is Yolanda Randall, the Executive Director for the West Fresno Family Resource Center, to answer any questions regarding her institution.
Okay, so, my only question, or really question that I have is, there, this is a five-year agreement, correct?
Correct.
And the monies that we're allocating, though, for this year is $50,000, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, and I just, you know, want to highlight those points, because I think that it's great that we are working in partnership with nonprofits to help us operate and provide some of the services to the community. But I just want to make sure that, you know, over the life of the agreement, that we do provide these nonprofits that are helping us as partners, the support necessary to continue providing the services and resources that they provide, that are very valuable to the residents that visit these centers. So, the $50,000 will only be for this year. Does that mean that in the next budget, we would have to reallocate, or is it just because there's a specific need this time?
When the, when the, the center was being operated under United One Productions, the operator had approached the department, and we were providing some staffing for the facility. After United One left, we continued to provide the staffing. And during that interim period when United One left, I contacted Ms. Randall and asked her if she'd be interested in operating the center. She said she would be, but she did have concerns regarding startup funds to begin the operation there. During the budget process, $50,000 was allocated, but it was only for one-year funding, and we sat down with Ms. Randall to explain to her that this support was only going to be for one year. The, at the present time, they're looking at it as startup funds to get the operation going. Obviously, if additional funds are needed, they will be contacting us or the council office, and we would, if additional funds, additional support is needed, we would work with the council office to see what would happen during the next fiscal year, and we would also work with the city manager's office.
Great. And again, think that it's great that they stepped up to help the community and really oversee the community center. I just, I bring the issue up, and I pulled it, because similarly, we had an issue in Inspiration Park, and we had to come back and allocate money. And so, I just want to make sure that the council, my council colleagues are aware of some of the issues that do come up, and that as we're looking at future budgets, that we are maybe allocating some funds, just so, kind of like contingency funds. So, if we do have organizations that need additional support, so that they can continue to do the operating or providing the services that they need in these centers, which, you know, we own, that we do have that. I think it's important for the sustainability of some of these organizations. I know that we're, you know, this year, we did again budget monies for RICV, so that they can continue to operate and maintain Inspiration Park, because they're unable to, as a nonprofit, they're not able to, at least in, for Inspiration Park, fundraise the $160,000 that it takes to operate a park. So, I just want to make sure that we're mindful of those things, and that as we look at future budgets, that we potentially set aside some funds to be able to help and support the nonprofits that are helping us as partners. And so, I'll make a motion, or if you want to make the motion, and then I'll second that motion, so that we give the $50,000. Thank you.
The screen is clear, and Manuel, did you want to say something? I'm sorry. Did me cut you off.
Yes, well, I'm getting myself in trouble with some of the other CBOs that we have. In working with all the CBOs that we do operate with, I would like to recognize and commend Yolanda Randall and the West Fresno Family Resources Center. Of all the CBOs that we do work with, they are the strongest organization that we work with, and really do an incredible job in providing services, and really work very, very harmoniously with my department in meeting the needs of a very underserved community. So, I'd like to recognize her for all of the great work that she does, and it's just wonderful cooperating with her and working with her.
Thank you very much. Screen is clear, as we say, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 6-0. Member Brand absent. Next, we'll go to Item 4A. Many of the California and Elm, Jim, the Mexi, Elm, Parks Community Center, and Jim. Member Baines. Ann Barfield.
I'm not a member. So, do motion. All right, Gregory Barfield, Chief of Staff, to Councilmember Baines. I think earlier, the resolution that you all did honoring Mr. Parks speaks for itself. The California and Elm Jim is actually a name we kind of made up. The Californian Elm Gym is actually a name we kind of made up for the first operator who came in. We, the technical name on the documents is Neighborhood Youth Center, ELC Neighborhood Youth Center at that. And Mr. Rudd was not going for that. So we, for the purposes of the first contract, we called it the Californian Elm Community Center and Gym. But as you have heard, the work of Ms. Randall's and the West Fresno Family Resource Center, that center really needs more than just a geographic name. It needs a name to offset it from the neighboring facility across the street, which is an ELC center. So hence, the choosing of Maxi L. Parks Community Center and Gym, so.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
And, Councilmember Baines? I just will add briefly, I was saddened to miss the earlier recognition of Maxi Parks, and unfortunately, he's not here to hear this, but I think this is a very high honor for our community to give to Maxi Parks, well-deserving, a gold medal athlete, an Olympic athlete. So, I think all's been said. We did the resolution, and Greg gave this. I just want to make the motion that we, to approve this item.
I'll second it. Any other comments?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. The, the city manager, Rudd, has said there will be no need to worry about naming, having to pay, naming rights.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate that.
We make sure we make that part of the record.
It does not include naming rights.
Well, it is part of the record, we appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none back up here, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes six zero. Member Brand absent. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item 4B. Approve the designation of League of Cities Business Meeting for this year. I sponsor that. It speaks for itself. The membership there is the same members that attended last year. We're keeping a bit of continuity here, as we see things progress through the League of Cities each year, and being three advocates for Fresno and the issues that we address here every day. So, that would be item 4B, and I would make a motion to approve. Member Olivier.
The Council President.
A voting member.
Council President, I, the way that, I'm going to be in a different set of meetings than the other members. So I'm going to be in Board of Directors meetings, and so won't be able to vote on the floor. And in recent years, the other members who go along vote and are the alternate, I'm left off of that. But I'm going to be there for the, I'm signed up for the, as many seminars as I can go to, but I'm also, I also vote at the, at a different meeting. And I think that this agenda item has me as the voting delegate. That's the way I read it.
Council President.
I mean, I'm doing everything wrong today, so.
Member Brandal.
I'm on the wrong side of everything.
There's still time.
Where is that?
But, no, I think this is correct, Clint, and the truth is, because this is the same setup that we've had for a couple of years now, and we've never run into conflict. And even though at the meetings that you couldn't attend, we could not go in and vote in your place, and there was no voting on the floor, quote, "on the floor." So.
I'm not the voting delegate, but if, you're voting alternates, so if I can't go, you guys are going to go and vote anyway.
Yeah, but I believe you're going, right?
As long as someone can vote and support Fresno.
Yeah.
Then that's what we need.
That's a dead deal.
All right.
I'll second your motion, then.
Thank you. Screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes six zero. Member Brand absent. You know, at this moment, I think we'll go to unscheduled communication. Thank you all for being here. I have quite a few cards. Louis Marquez, are you here? Thank you for being patient today. I'm sure it was an interesting conversation for, for those in the chamber. If you give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Name is Louis Marquez, 5531 East Indianapolis, Fresno.
Of course, sir.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. My ideas and thoughts today for the city of Fresno, it's just things that I, I support downtown Fresno, and I, I hope to work with the beautification committees sometime in the future. But I look at downtown being torn down, and the old warehouses on, near the railroad, and I was thinking, why don't we use some of that brick that's being torn down and stored at warehouses, and using it for projects in downtown area to cover up patches of dirt that can be a whole lot, give Fresno, downtown Fresno, a whole lot more color, and ensure, make it cleaner, and most importantly, make it a whole lot safer, because some of these patches of dirt have shrubs that are very not, not the best-looking shrubs, but as a pedestrian walks by at night or early evening, the concern comes to their mind when they, when they're approaching it, there may be somebody behind it. But that's where I come out, where I say it may be safer for that person. But having to add the red brick, even if it's the old-looking brick, patches, patches of, what I mean by safer is, it makes the ground unlevel, unlevel, so dirt, and someone who's not used to the area, I do it even at times right now, where I walk and I step down on dirt. Opposed to having brick, it's just, it's level, it's safer, it's cleaner, and again, it's, it gives its color to downtown. We can utilize some of that red brick by adding some of the history of Chinatown, and creating some, you know, some areas, and there's a lot of areas. You know, Veterans Memorial Auditorium, we know that there's a lot of homeless people staying around there. They're making it very ugly. I oppose all that. I wish that we can take out some of those shrubs around there, clean it up, add brick around, and fill up those curb sides. There's already curb side lining in there. If we could take some of the shrubs out and fill up the inside of that curb side, I believe, I know that it's going to attract color to that building, a good facial look, and that's just one example, an area that I think it can be making Fresno a whole lot better. I wish that we can use that red brick and all over Fresno. One other thing, too, if I can add, if we have a graffiti team, why can't we have a Operation Alley Cleanup Team? Have a two-man team, clean up the alleys, people coming into Fresno, if they wish to move to Fresno. And one thing they do see is alleys, if you're looking to the right or left, if you look to the alley just behind us on our street, just a whole alley right there, as you're going home, look at that alley, it's two-man operation, call it Operation Alley Cleanup. It would clean up all the alleys, and it wouldn't cost much.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Corinne Wong.
Council President.
You know, I missed your name. What was your name?
Louis Marquez.
Can you connect with my Chief of Staff, Lindsay Barsamian? Do you go online? Can you go to Fresno.gov?
Absolutely. Sure. Sure, I can meet with you any, any way or anytime you want, if you wish.
Yeah, go to Fresno.gov, or when you leave, go into the lobby, and she's gone for, she left for the day. But give her, give them your name, we'll give you a call. I like some of your ideas.
Very good, thank you.
We'll use them in District Two, Northwest Fresno.
Which district is this?
This is Councilman Baines.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Corinne Wong, are you here? Okay, we move on to, okay, Louis, you put another card in, sorry, from you, thank you again. And then we have Paul Condon, C-O-N-D-O-N. Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for your patience in being here. I saw your head going up and down and side to side, so you were, you were into our discussion, I could tell.
I love Fresno. For some reason, I'm not being allowed to run for city council. This isn't the first time, this is the third.
Could you give your name and address?
Paul Condon, 1190 South Winery, number 257. For some reason, I mean, this doesn't make sense in America. I love this country, I love this town. For some reason, when reporting my daughter being molested, I was hung up on three times and told nobody's going to be sent out. Well, since that day, I've talked to Sal since then a couple of times. This doesn't make sense, nothing's changing. I finally signed up for the city council, I paid my $300, I done everything, they won't let me run. They say, again, I was two signatures short. Same thing with the mayor's election. How's that? Then when I come in to turn in my signatures, after one, I left at noon from the elections office, ran all the way to Hazelwood, from Hazelwood took the bus to Ranchwoods, got 39 signatures. From the Ranchwoods ran all the way back here to elections office, turned them in at 4:45, and they're telling me two signatures short. But for some reason, when I walked in the building, they doubled up security instantly. I knew right then I was out. This doesn't make sense that this is happening. Then I received a letter from Sacramento, it's mailed from, but it's from our elections office, which states, "Good news. Mr. Condon, I have been calling you this evening to notify you the office goes into extension, but no one answered. I was unable to leave a message. Your box is full. There is still time for you to collect signatures. Our county council has determined that the seat goes into extension since no incumbent did file his paperwork. We're under the assumption that the seat was vacant when in fact it was not. You still have until Wednesday, August 17th, at 5 o'clock to turn in two more signatures. Please attach nominations convenience. I sincerely apologize for the stress this has caused you." 9:35 in the morning, I turned them in on Monday. Now I'm not still being able to run.
This is an election process, and I think you have to go to the county clerk for the procedural aspect for any.
On the eighth, on the eighth, the procedural, on the eighth, I went in to sign up, they told me I didn't live in the district. I've lived in the district for 11 years. I walk around Tuesday night, there's a sign that states there, Mr. Con, or for District Five, City Council, from Jose Varez. But on the bottom of it says 2010 election. I mean, he doesn't even know what year he's running in. And then we got, the other one, he just says councilman on his election things, he doesn't even know what seat he's going for. This can't be happening. I stole over $5,000 in autographs, $1,500 in road control cars, for 300 bucks to do this. If I don't believe in Fresno, I don't know what you want. I was denied two days of getting this. I was, this isn't, I would understand, okay, if I didn't go in on Monday, and they said, okay, no, I did it all and I didn't show up? That didn't happen. I literally did all this in five hours. How did I turn in 39 signatures and I didn't have it? The same 20 signatures that allowed me to run for mayor. I was on it, on the ballot, I just dropped out because Doug Vegum said he'd take it. He was more qualified than I was.
Sir, I don't know what to tell you, other than the elections department, and try to follow their procedural.
They're saying Doug's the one that said I can't run.
Well, all I know is that the elections department runs that procedural show, if you will.
The elections department's the one that said I could at first, sir, until Doug said I couldn't.
Yeah, okay. But please go back to them and see what you can do, and thanks for being here, and thanks for your participation. I appreciate it, really.
Participation, I got screwed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
This is fun, Doug.
All right, now, we need to hear from Gary, I don't see Gary here. Help me, Clint, with his last name? Yes, say it again? Doxico.
He's gone. We have his problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's what we do in D7.
Thank you for your first successful project.
Just wait, what I got next?
Valerie, Valerie Voss, Fresno Art Museum, thank you.
You're with me.
Did you want to think about that? Okay, thank you much. All right, that closes unscheduled communication. I guess, I think we're at the end of the calendar, I have no choice. So item 4D, as in David, actions pertaining to creation of a City Park Ranger Service to provide public safety in parks, and this is sponsored by Councilmember Olivier. Okay. You're looking well today, sir.
Thank you. I've never presented from the lectern before, and I decided today would be the day that I would start.
Actually, you have, Clint, because you bought those little houses that last time.
Little houses?
Yeah, it was on the infill, I think it was the infill.
Did that pass?
I don't know if it passed or not, but like your little houses.
So I'm one for one from the lectern? Is that what you're saying?
You better look at the record.
I think I'm one for one here. All right, I just have a very brief presentation. Went out to Radio Park, which is located at the corner of First and Clinton in my district, and this was last, I think last Thursday or Friday, actually, it was Friday, went out and I took some pictures. On Monday morning, my staff came in and completed a walkthrough audit of the remaining parks in the 7th District, and this is a slideshow of video pictures of what we saw and what we found. The picture you're looking at, at the far left of your screen, is one of those Koala Care baby care units that's been installed into the wall of a new bathroom. The old bathroom was razed and taken away, and the new bathroom was put up. This was a major capital improvement that the administration did in this park. What, cost us $100,000, $200,000 bucks for this bathroom. Cleared away the old one. The old one had been destroyed by abuse for years and years by vagrants and druggies. That was the last time I was there, I found syringes in the bathroom and picked them up myself. Today, or when I went on Friday, how would, how would anyone like to change their baby on this Koala Care? Okay, the taxpayers paid a huge amount of money, an exorbitant amount of money, to put Koala Care on the wall of this bathroom, and that's what it looks like, because the vagrants are trying to destroy it. The middle picture is a picnic area where families go, but families don't come to Radio Park, because if you look around, there's trash, and nobody wants to picnic in filth. The next picture is the new bathroom. Beautiful, right? Great facility, cost the taxpayers a fortune. The vagrants are destroying the bathroom. Take a look, even though there is a clean new toilet there, somebody prefers to use the floor. Next slide, please. This is Remain Park. Remain Park, we encountered the same situation, there's a new bathroom that's there, but this is a porta potty that is there also, that has been tagged. I don't think that mothers of young children would feel safe or clean using this bathroom facility. I don't know what these wires are, exposed wires on the side of the, near a playground coming out of a pipe. I floss continually, but that one's not mine. The basketball thing here could probably use a coat of paint, maybe we could do something like a neighborhood revitalization where people can come out for like a day, a spirit day to come out and clean and paint this piece, but it's very rusty and shabby looking. Next one, please. This is Lafayette Park. It's just Lafayette Park not as bad as some of the other parks in the 7th District, but just the problem with trash, it looks like a gardening staff or whoever put weeds or old leaves in a pile with trash and just left it there. Next one, please. Einstein Park, this is where we've got the box of needles here on the right with the shopping cart. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that a vagrant left that shopping cart there with the box of needles where children play. Trash, Swisher Suites, cigars, garbage. Next slide, please. Okay, and that's, that's all we had. I mean, there are other pictures, but I don't want to beat this issue to death. The problem that we have in the 7th District is not unlike problems that we're having in other council districts. I know that Councilmember Baines recently provided pictures of Hyde Park, where the trees have been tagged, and that doesn't exactly say, you know, we want families to come here when the trees have been marked like that. With a $1 billion budget and a $300 million general fund budget, I believe that this is, that we have no excuse as a body for coming to work every day and going home and leaving the parks in our districts in this, in this situation, where they're unsafe, where they're unclean, and they're, if they're like Radio Park, they're owned and operated by vagrants and druggies. Because when I was there, we had both, and something needs to be done. So I, in an effort to just spur the conversation, I placed two agenda items on the agenda for consideration today. In the past, when I've looked to solve problems and put things on the agenda, I'll go back and I'll do my homework, and I'll talk to administration, and they'll help me, and I'll write a big paper out, and then I'll go to Doug, and then city attorney will, will come up with something, and then I'll go to the chamber and ask them for their input, and write an editorial in the B, and then put it on the agenda. But oftentimes, when we bring things forward here at Fresno City Council, they change. They always change, there's always compromise. Maybe somebody has a good idea that they want to add, and so that is added, maybe something that I had wasn't such a good idea and it gets taken out. So instead of doing all that, I thought that it would be a good idea to just place it on the agenda, and then hear from you, my council colleagues, who I know each and every one of you are struggling with these problems in your parks. And maybe, out of our discussion today, and with input from our city manager, former Parks Director, we can come up with some kind of policy that could at least alleviate this problem. You know, again, I'm uncomfortable with continuing. You know, again, I'm uncomfortable with continuing to be a representative of the people and not bring this discussion to the forefront, because I think that one of the places, obviously we connect with people every day with our police department, and we connect with people every day with our fire department, because we're out in the neighborhoods saving lives and protecting property. But if you don't have an emergency, how are we connecting with people? We're connecting with people on our roads, we get those calls, and we're connecting with people at our parks. And to me, this is not a good connection. And this isn't what we want, the legacy that we want to leave in the minds of the people that we were, that sent us here to represent them. So with that, I would like to make a motion on this, or you know what, I'll just, I'll go ahead and hold off, because maybe, you know, like I said, we'll hear some good things. I'm interested in pursuing a form of park ranger program, and they have different park ranger programs that exist in different cities. And so I actually had a staff member who took it upon herself to research this information. We have information from the city of Claremont, the city of Santa Barbara, and the city of Los Angeles. And just as examples, these three cities, these three municipalities are patrolling their parks and protecting their parks in different ways. And so for a quick presentation, I'm going to turn it over to my staff member, Aubrey
Good afternoon, council. I'm the council assistant to Councilmember Olivier. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of Claremont, Santa Barbara, and Los Angeles, and what they've done with their park ranger programs. So first with Claremont, just FYI, their system is a little bit different than ours. They don't have a Parks and Recreation Department like division, but it's under their human services. And that's just for reference. So they have always had some form of park rangers within their city. They started out as police aides, then they moved under the Community Services Department, which we do have here in the city of Fresno. And now they are official park rangers under the Human Services Department, where the Parks Department is also under. They are part-time employees with one senior manager, and what they do is they patrol urban and rural parks by bike, off-road vehicles, and on foot. They work with Community Services Department, Claremont PD, and LA County Fire Department, support and engage community with activities in the parks, and facilitate environmental awareness and education on proper use of city parks through contact with park users. So that's just for Claremont. And the only things that we do have similar with their police aid program is that we have volunteers in police service, the VIPs. They work under our police department, and we also have the community service officers, which also work under the police department, and we have Park Medics, which is a program under UCSF here in Fresno, who go out and treat people within the parks for medical emergencies. So now Santa Barbara. Their structure is similar to ours in that they do have a Parks and Recreation Department. So they are, they do have park rangers and they are employees. Their employee, their employment process is a little bit different, though. First, they go through the county as ranger trainees, and they have to apply that way, but then they become city ranger, city park rangers after that, if they get approved after the ranger trainee position. So the ranger trainees, they greet visitors, are cashiers, interpret and enforce park rules, applying appropriate rescue, lifesaving, and first aid techniques, maintaining lifeguard equipment, providing safety information to pool users, and complying with lifeguard procedures. And then they move up to ranger. And as a ranger, they're responsible for enforcing city ordinances and park rules, assisting in public, assisting the public in safe park experience, and providing park information, and educating the public about city parks and open spaces, the history and the usage of parks, which I think is interesting, and assist in policing and animal control and accomplishing their goals and priorities as they relate to the parks. Also, fun fact, in an emergency, they are, people are requested to call dispatch, and dispatch will decide if it's going to go to the police department or if it's going to the park rangers. So that's just something interesting. Now moving on to Los Angeles, they actually have a park rangers division, and they have peace officer park rangers, civilian park rangers, and park patrol officers. So there's the three different levels. So this concludes my freshly done research, and I am still developing my research on the different cities with park ranger programs, including Los Angeles, and they're, yeah. And if any of you council members have any further questions as to what the city could potentially do or anything about this research, you can ask.
Thank you very much. That was very refreshing.
Ask a question.
Why don't we just punch up and then we'll go down the board? Thank you very much, Member Olivier.
Thank you. I'm wrapping it up. That's the end of my presentation, but as part of my presentation, I have two speakers. The first is Valerie Voss, she's the receptionist at the Fresno Art Museum, and she sits there and watches this, this park decay before her very eyes. And so she's got a two-minute presentation for you. And then, and then I'll, you know, and then I'll come back and speak for about 35 seconds on my second motion, and then we have Peter Abatia, who's going to speak to us for just a moment here, so.
Valerie, it's on you.
Wow, okay, I can do this. Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Voss, and I'm here on behalf of the Fresno Art Museum in regards to the activity at Radio Park and around the art museum building. Michelle Ellis-Pracy apologizes that she's unable to attend this meeting today due to a previous set meeting at this time. Part of my job at the museum is to work in the front reception desk, and so I will be sharing some of the events that I've personally witnessed within the last few months, some weeks, some days. And they go beyond what you would normally expect to see in a park or art museum setting. These occurrences and the level of aggressive behavior have been increasing in the recent months, and there's a pack mentality behavior with these incidents that is not only incredibly dangerous to museum guests and, and staff members, but is also now causing visitors to continue driving past the museum out of fear of the outside and surroundings and behaviors, or people that have rented our facilities, that includes the California Opera Association a couple of weeks ago, and Stages Fresno having to sit in their cars and call the police themselves, or call us because they're afraid to leave their cars to enter the buildings that they've rented or set aside for themselves. So I'm going to go over a list of some of the things that I've personally witnessed. There's been an overwhelming amount of park alcohol consumption, which of course can happen at public parks, but the amount of drug deals that happen are happening within a five to 10-minute rotation. There's actually one vehicle that we literally see go in the parking lot and literally the people like chase it down like it's an ice cream truck. It literally is going through a rotation. And we have people, that same group that waits for them, and waits in that corner of Radio Park and by the museum, are approaching people, they're taunting, they're threatening, they're threatening the public when they're entering or exiting the building. There was an incident with a crowbar where two people jumped out of a car and attacked another individual on the side of the art museum on Yale Avenue, and we had to put the museum into lockdown. That was about a month ago. One bus driver for Fresno Unified School District ran into the building while there was 100 kids visiting the art museum during a class visit, because a gentleman was masturbating in front of her, and he, she ran and calling the police, and then the police took about an hour to get there, and the man had eventually moved to the park, was masturbating in front of the children. Then there was another, there, on Yale Avenue, there are several prostitutes that are openly servicing men when you're walking up the sidewalk, right next to their buildings, not hiding it at all, and it's right next to the gate, gated area on the side of Yale Avenue, right by the Sculpture Garden, where the guest and the public can openly see it. I've also witnessed a security guard being threatened multiple times by different people, a woman screaming at people when they were coming up. This was two weeks ago, sorry, two Sundays ago, a woman was punching the sculptures, screaming at the visitors and throwing objects. Last week, a security guard's life was being threatened by a man at the front doors, and he was throwing objects at the art. Last Sunday, a woman standing in a handicapped square spotted without her pants on, without any undergarments on underneath, screaming at the guests for over an hour and a half in that spot. There have been, a woman was being domestically abused, she was being punched by a gentleman, the security guard. It was an evening event, the security guard called the police and put his flashlight, this gentleman, the group started threatening our security guard, and then we called the police an hour later, nothing had happened. Then that same evening, we heard screams outside of the building, and within 25 feet of the front entrance, the, a pack of people, a pack of men attacked a woman and a man when people were leaving the facilities for a play, and jumped them and robbed them. And it was a group of men that literally pounced onto one man and did this. So all of these things are going on at the museum. There's of course cars being broken into, other incidents as well, but those were some of the big things that were going on. And the Fresno Art Museum is an important part of the Fresno Central Valley. Not only does it have amazing art exhibitions, but it's also a main destination spot for travelers from all over the world visiting Fresno on the way to Yosemite National Parks. We host weddings, memorials, performances, real pride events, California Opera Association performances, we have district meetings. And the art museum hosts over 10,000 school-aged children that visit the museum each year. And it's, the art museum and that surrounding area is what travelers will see and experience, and they'll take back with them from their time in Fresno. Thank you for taking your time.
Thank you very much.
So I think just to kind of sum up, what's the, what's going on in Radio Park in District 7 isn't unlike the things that are happening in all of our districts. I think that these stories are especially troubling. I liked what Aubrey was able to find out. I mean, obviously, it's a very, we're at the very beginning stage of exploring this, but I like the idea of having some kind of park ranger staff, and then the dispatchers can send either park rangers or police, depending on what the, what the challenge is. I think that it's high time that we did something to protect the parks. The number one way that we can connect with people in the city of Fresno that aren't actually in trouble, that need 911 help. The second motion, or the second item that's on the agenda is about cleanup crew. I think that we need to have an additional cleanup crew or two added to the rotation. If a box of syringes on a playground doesn't convince this body that we've got to do more, I don't know what will. I think that we've reached critical mass, and as policymakers, we've got to make policy. And I would, I would urge you, I'm very interested in hearing your remarks and your comments. Maybe, maybe we don't agree so much on trains, but I know that everybody up on that dais right now really cares about our parks, and, and I think we can probably find some common ground. With that, my presentation is coming to an end. Mr. Peter Abatia, he's the Director of Community Development from Social Vocational Services, is going to speak for a couple of minutes. I'm going to come back up to the dais and then just turn it over to you. I'm very interested to hear your opinions, and that also includes you, city manager. Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. If you'd give us your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Good afternoon, my name is Peter Abatia. I am a resident of Sanger, but I come here today as the Director of Community Development for Social Vocational Services. We are a nonprofit agency that provides supportive services for intellectually disabled adults. And when I heard that Councilman Olivier was looking to have a park crew, cleanup crew, I contacted him, let him know what we partnered with in Sanger, in Parlay, in Lemoore, and also Tulare County. We've been able to partner with them to provide maintenance, yard maintenance in parks, janitorial services in city buildings, and also litter abatement. And what makes us such a viable option is that since our clients are intellectually disabled adults, we're able to contract them at sub-minimum wage. With that, we also are able to provide workman's comp, liability, and a job coach that comes with them. For every three clients, there's one job coach. The job coach is responsible for transporting the clients, making sure that they're actually doing the work, and then actually leaving all at one time. One of the recent litter abatement crews that we set up is with St. Agnes Hospital. We have two crews there, and just to give you just some quick numbers, because I know the bottom line is always the bottom line. We have three clients working there with one job coach, two hours a day, five days a week. All they do is pick up trash, and we charge St. Agnes Hospital $900 per month, and we have two clients doing that. I mean, excuse me, two contracts with that, so a total of six individuals, and each crew of three and one job coach, we charge $900. So those are just some cursory figures. I know you're really tired, really busy, and you're definitely ready to go home, and I probably have a ticket on my car, but that's okay. So I'm open for questions, if you have any questions. Other than that, thank you so very, very much for your time and effort.
Peter, thank you for coming. Valerie, thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay as long as you can. I'm sure city manager will waive your parking ticket if you get one, because you're participating. Incidentally, Peter is the father of, you know, Aaron Abatia from KMJ News, the news anchor, that's his dad, so. We're a small family here, here in the valley. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
I'd say one last thing.
Yes, please.
You know, I've had to present to a number of different city councils, and I have to say, truly from the heart, I don't know what happens behind the scenes, but what's happening up here is truly a pleasurable view. The diplomacy that you show, and even when you disagree, you're not disagreeable. So my hat is off to you. I've been to somewhere, you know, city manager's ready to go blows with the chief of police, you know?
He may still be.
Literally, I've seen some of those things, some of those smaller cities, but you, I've never been to a city council meeting here in Fresno, but I definitely have to pass it on to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can come and tell us that anytime you want.
So I'm through, and I won't make a motion until we craft some policy.
All right, hold on now. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward and discuss this item? This is the opportunity. You'll have three minutes. Back up here. First and foremost, Member Stephen Prandell.
All right. Well Clint, you know, for starters, I saw, because we're Facebook friends, I saw when you immediately Facebooked the situation. What day was that again?
This week.
Just this week?
A week ago, tomorrow.
A week ago, tomorrow, okay. And, and you know, and we had an immediate conversation in District 2. We face, you know, we face some of the same issues and we face some different issues. And so I wanted to say, you know, I, I'm glad that you're out there bringing things up that we need to talk about. I do want to say that it's tough to just kind of craft policy on the fly, if that's what you're asking us to do right now. So for me, that's a little tough. I like Clint, I like, I like the, the old Clint that comes with the policy, the Chamber of Commerce, the Fresno Bee, and then, I like that, the homework Clint.
Working on something with that.
Okay, 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 cool. Because then that, then that, then we can kind of either scrap it, fine-tune it, work with it, make amendments to it. So kind of creating policy on the fly gets a little sketchy to me, but, but I do think that we do need to do something about it. And so I was going to say, thank you to all three people that you had connected. Aubrey, good thumbs up there, and is it Valerie?
Sorry.
Valerie, I'm so sorry what you have to put up with over there at the art museum. You know, your patrons have to see some of that. I think we're aware of it, we're going to, we're going to get it fixed. I don't know if we're going to get it fixed today, but I know that Clint was right, this council is very passionate about our parks. And Peter, I really like that idea that you have, and you know, we, we could probably do something with your program, whether it's this or some other thing. I'm a little worried about your crews. So I live in an apartment, and I have a development disabled group that comes in and cleans up my complex, I think twice a week. And so I see them, and I think they do a fantastic job. They're doing, you know, simple litter pickup, right? And they've all got their gloves. I see the, a coach, I see a coach there, always there to kind of jump in and help them, or if somebody approaches them, they'll, that coach will kind of tell them what we're doing, that type of thing. So I mean, that's a, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, Councilmember Prandell, just for, just for point of order, to kind of, maybe I did leave you hanging as a group, colleagues, and so instead of doing that, I will make a motion, right now, I will make a motion that we give city manager 30 days to return to council with, with a skeleton, some kind of plan to implement some kind of way to protect our parks, whether it's in the form of a park ranger program, could be a volunteer program, could be a paid program. That would be my motion.
Then, then let me get the microphone in front of Bruce.
Exactly.
So, so I think, I think he was afraid you were going to do that. I think he was afraid you were going to do that. But Bruce, I met, just coincidentally Clint, Cap and I met with the Parks Master Plan Consultant today. And, and I brought up some of your issues Clint, at that meeting, including security. Is security... Is security within the scope of work for the Parks Master Plan? And they actually told Paul and I that so many council members have talked to them about security, that security's going to have to be part of the Parks Master Plan, which they, their goal is to bring this to us next June. So, we have to, we have to make sure that we don't have cataclysm between now and next June. So, I'm, I'm willing to do some things between now and next June, but it's really weird for me to think that we're hiring this massive overhaul of our Parks Master Plan, and, and we're going to try and jump in in front of them without knowing what their analysis tells us, and, and try and figure it out. And I don't know, maybe we don't even need them. If we can do it right on the council, maybe we don't even need them, and save a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I think that if security's part, yours is a security and a cleanup situation, Clint, and, right? Two aspects.
You're unsafe and dirty. Yes, it's a security and cleanup.
All right. Bruce, did you meet with Clint on this item, or where are we at on this?
Well, after the fact, I went in, asked the council member if I could spend 15 minutes with him, relay to, to discuss his concerns. And as I shared with him, we're going to need to address a bigger and broader issue. Because what is manifesting itself in our parks is occurring in our neighborhoods. I attended the meeting in Council District 1 last week, and a lot of the things that I, I heard from the representative from the Fresno Art Museum, I'm hearing from the residents. The same kind of behavioral issues, the same kind of impacts. I actually made a comment that, you know, I've got good news and bad news. The bad news is we all recognize the impact that, there's a segment of our population that is negatively impacting the quality of life for a lot of our residents. The good news, it's not just in District 1, it's not just District 2. And contrary to popular belief, it isn't all because we dispersed the homeless in the, that were historically located in District 3. Seemed like it was okay for some people for that to be there, but not now in their neighborhoods. My point is, is that you all have heard from your constituents. I met from, with some representatives today who are interested in making some improvements at Kaiser Park. And guess what they were complaining to me about? The activities that were occurring in the park and around the neighborhood. I've heard of in your district, Councilmember Brandow, I've heard of, you know, Council President has a group of business owners who are upset about damage and vandalism and theft and everything else that's occurring now at the airport. Now, that may be tied to the parole office being relocated as a result of the high-speed rail project. But my point is, I committed to the council member that I would convene a meeting of all my departments, the ones that I think would be effective. On Monday, I extended the offer to the council member, that he can send a representative. I know Councilmember Soria is bringing, saying her chief of staff, to come up with some, some recommendations. Now, some of these recommendations would include some policy changes. And the question will be, is are you all fed up enough to accept some policy changes that may be pretty hard for some of your other constituents to accept? But there is absolutely a situation occurring in our community that is manifesting itself in its, in our parks. I can walk over here to Eaton Plaza. I did yesterday, as I had to spend a little time with my friends at LaFco. And there was probably at least 12 individuals there who looked like they were just kind of hanging around. And while they didn't have shopping carts, they had baby strollers and everything else that had been modified. So, I'm going to work with my staff, and certainly take the input from Councilmember Soria's office. And again, Councilmember Olivier, if you want to send someone from your office to sit on these meetings.
When is that meeting?
It's Monday, and I'll get you the time. I think it's around 3:00.
Yeah, we'll have somebody from my district office.
So, and we'll come back with some, some possible recommendations, but this is a problem that's not just Fresno, unique to Fresno. As I shared with the council member's staff, this is a problem facing cities up and down California. And so, we will try to find some ways to mitigate, but because of prison realignment, you know, Prop 47, I don't know, we, there's no way we, we don't have enough money or resources to arrest our way out of this problem, and that's not going to be a viable alternative. I like the idea of the program that the gentleman from Sanger presented. I think even if we didn't have this other issue, I was actually mentioning to the council member that I was trying to find the contact number, because a friend of mine had suggested perhaps using, I guess it's your group, because there's our Inspiration Park, which is designed specifically for people with disabilities, to have that group, I guess it's your company, actually help with RACV with maintaining that park. Because they're actually designed to meet individuals, no matter what their needs are. So, we'll come back, I don't know if it's in 30 days, but we will certainly come back in a reasonable amount of time with, with some, you know, suggestions as to how we mitigate this problem.
And, okay, Bruce, cool. So, so you, so you, you know, these are things that you've, you've seen. I think we've all seen them. I think it's good that Councilman Olivier's brought it really fresh at home. In District 2, you know, I'm looking, matter of fact, these pictures that are up on the board now from Einstein Park. Now, the minute I say this, I'm going to get calls from some citizens in District 2 that says this exists, and I hope that they're patient with me. I don't think it exists at the level that it exists at Einstein or Radio Park, okay? We have, we'll have a vagrant move into a park, and our, really quickly, my citizens will get fired up. Some of them will chase them out of the park physically themselves, which I'm always very appreciative of. And then others will call me. Not too long ago, Valerie, we have a little park on Hernan, where I live, called Orchid Park. And we had a drug problem there. It happened every evening at a certain time in the evening. Whoom, all of a sudden, you'd see about 10 trucks and cars pull in. Things would happen, it would get dark, then they'd leave, and the next morning, we could find, you know, some drug paraphernalia and stuff like that. So, we did a little sting operation, stopped it. I don't know, I don't think it, probably stopped it permanently, but definitely broke that, that one up.
They went to Radio Park.
What's that?
They went to Radio Park.
And then they, then that group went to Radio Park. Right, right, right. I mean, it sounds like a scene out of Breaking Bad. So, so, you know, really, it's a lot of Breaking Bad, to be honest with you. We have citizens breaking bad. That's what's, that's what's happening. You said we can't arrest our way out of it. In the Philippines, I want you to know that they cane people for this type of behavior. And so, is that within our limits as a charter city? Okay, that's a joke. Don't answer, Bruce, don't answer in front of Doug. Okay? But I'm with you. Clint, it's really weird. I think at some level, we've got to take the citizens that surround our parks, the citizens that use our parks, and incorporate their help, okay? So, I don't know Radio Park that well. I've actually gone to the Art Museum several times, and then I always kind of like, oh, here's Radio Park. So, I don't know Radio Park that well, but there's got to be 1,000 good people within walking distance of that park. And we've got to find a way of incorporating their help in helping us monitor that park. I know that's what happens somewhat in North Fresno. Our citizens will, I've got a couple people that I know of that will physically run vagrants out of the parks. Now, I'm, and I don't even know if it's all a vagrancy problem, or is it just people using the park aren't as aware of, they should be, how much damage they're creating when they go there and have a party, and then leave stuff all over the place? It's pretty damaging. This, the stuff that's happening to your restrooms is out of control. I do see that occasionally in Northwest Fresno, so I know it's a problem across the city. Bruce, on the ranger idea, have we ever investigated that idea in the past? Or maybe I should ask Sal.
No, well, I'll let Sal correct me if I'm wrong. There was at one time a discussion, they actually put the Parks Department under the Police Department. And that the Police Department would, yeah, I know, you're looking at me like, really? And this is, this was, yeah. And this is before November of this year. So, there has been discussions about it. Again, it comes down to resources. Is it going to be a sworn position? Is it going to be a community service officer? You know, and so, part of my conversation is, you know, whether it's a ranger or a community service officer, is a community service officer now assigned to the park and to the surrounding area? A lot of the things that occur in the park, quite honestly, occur at night. So, we have partnered with the zoo to pay for security within Roding Park, because most of the stuff that was occurring, was occurring when nobody was there. Now, Roding Park at night is, is, isn't an issue anymore. But we can keep people from using the parks during the day, and we're still experiencing problems in Roding Park during the day. And people complain about being approached by individuals who are aggressively panhandling, damage to the bathrooms. I mean, it is a bigger issue than just, just the parks. So, it really comes back to, are we willing to start looking at some possible things in order to mitigate the impact? I mean, certainly, we can add more custodial, I mean, but that isn't going to reduce what some of the activities that are occurring at night.
Even Valerie's example, or Valerie's example, I mean, she's seen security officers assaulted, right? And so, if it's a ranger situation, if it's a policing situation, I mean, some of these people are doing criminal activity. And so, it's really tough to throw up an unarmed security officer against a couple of guys that are on, that are making a drug deal, right? So, at some level, we've got to get a form of law enforcement, I think, that carry a badge and a gun, to help us, even more than we are. So, is it all about, it's all about money, right? It's all about?
Well, money and policy. This is interesting discussion, because as, as you know, you and I have been having conversations with Caltrans over the last month over the condition of our freeways. And what has Caltrans told us? The reasons the freeways, or one of the reasons the freeways look as bad as they do, they're overgrown, they're strewn with trash, because they're so busy trying to repair the damage and the vandalism that has been created by vagrants or whatever it is. And so, it's not just a park issue, it's not just a freeway issue. I heard the residents in Councilmember Soria's district, it's the activity that's occurring in the alleyways, it's the activity that's occurring around a recycling center, it's the activities that, those people, they don't even have a park nearby other than the school. And they're, I'm sure if I talk to folks living around Quigley, they're going to tell me this, tell us all the same thing. She's going, oh, yeah, you're absolutely right. And so, my point is, is that I've got, I'm going to sit down with the Police Department, I'm going to sit down with my code enforcement, I'll sit down with the Parks Department, I'll have the city attorney represented there. I mean, we'll come up with some ways to try to mitigate it, but there is going, we're going to hire 15 more police officers at $1.5 million, whose sole purpose in life is to try to protect the parks when the rest of our neighborhoods are going to be dealing with the same issues that they're dealing with now. It becomes, the core issue is the behavior that is not only occurring in our parks, but also occurring in our neighborhoods that we're going to have to address. And that may need some policy that is outside the box, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, and that's why I said, we've got just a lot of citizens breaking bad, in the sense that, you know, they're, they're just out there making messes, they're just making constant messes in the city of Fresno. And it's, it's, it's reaching such an epidemic level that it's beyond our budget. You said we can't arrest our way out of it. And we don't have, you know, what's really interesting, and I don't know where the camera is for Comcast, but I hope everybody that understands one thing, is that we have spent a lot of money on parks in the last two budgets. Two years ago, we spent 10.5, it was like a record in recent memory, percentage of our budget on parks, this council. Then this year, in budget, we spent another big chunk of money. Now, I think you wanted a million dollars more, and we could, we could have voted another million dollars, and another $5 million, another $10 million, another $20 million. I don't know where it ends. I mean, the, the problem is so massive, it's, it's kind of hard to get our head around. And I, and you're right, the litter cleanup on, for Caltrans, it, it cleans it up for a time. I'll tell you what, Bruce, in one of the areas where I saw them level the weeds today on, today on Hernan and 41, North Fresno, I see a tiny little encampment of three tents and a bicycle and a couple of shopping carts. And somebody was talking about, one of the guys that came through earlier, talking about in the, in the bushes and the hedges, and that's exactly where they're set up. So, you know, it's like whack-a-mole. It's like that whack-a-mole. You know, you whack a mole in Orchid Park, they go to Radio Park. You whack a mole in Radio Park, they go in Quigley Park. You whack a mole in Quigley Park, and, so, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I'm very open, Clint, to the ranger idea. That's, I'm, as a council member, I'm open to that idea. Because I'm, I feel like it's got to be a law enforcement effort, that are willing to go in, and, but here's the deal. Are we going to get any cooperation from Jerry Brown in the state of California? Are we going to get any cooperation that's going to allow us to take people creating crimes and scaring the crap out of your people that are coming to the, that are coming to see the art? Are we going to be able to take those people that are committing crimes and lock them up? And it just, this is crazy, what's happening to our cities in the state of California under this lax leadership. And now they're pressing for Prop 57, which is even worse than Prop 47. And our cities have to take the brunt of this nonsense, and it's getting very painful. So, so Clint, I'm open to the ranger idea. I like this guy's idea for cleanup, but I could easily, I don't want to send his development disabled crews in the middle of a war zone. That's not fair.
I mean, it's, it's not so bad that a cleanup crew can't work. I mean, that's what it's, it's crying out for a cleanup crew. I don't want to leave the impression with this, this body that, that it's so bad that we can't even send repair people there, or cleanup people. I mean, it needs repair people and cleanup people. And the situation is severe, and, and in some cases grave, but not so bad that we can't service our parks. I want to make that clear.
You know, Clint, and you're a voting member of the League of Cities, and Paul and I are assisting you there, and cities all across California are facing this. Bruce is right, this is not just Fresno. All across California. And I think part of it's because the people at the top of the state level are forcing mandates on our, on our cities that allow these situations to occur, and then tie our hands so that we cannot properly address them, right? And especially when they come at such a financial cost. Because I could, I could easily see us today getting super emotional and saying, oh, let's throw another $5 million at it. And I would probably vote yes, because I want to see our parks cleaned up, okay? But I do think we're going to have to make some demands. If we want to do something about these pictures, all seven council members are going to have to get in, in unify, we're going to be unified and lockstep, we're going to have to create our best policy here, but we're going to have to make demands that go beyond our pay grade, and say, we need help. And I know other cities need help, too. So, I don't know what else to add, Clint, except I'm open to both of your items. I will even say that I'm open to creating a whole new bureaucracy, and I'm a small government guy. But I would create, if you, but if you could guarantee me, though, that if we create a ranger system, or anybody, both of you, when you come up with the idea. Yeah, Clint, you're a small government guy, too, right? Okay, so, and you want to create, now, so, are rangers, are they, are they sworn? Is that a brand-new dream?
That's what I want the city manager to figure out.
Don't pass the buck, no, don't pass the buck.
Yeah, I mean, he's got 38 years' experience, and he's.
He's 120 days.
He's a professional city manager. Pretty well. What do we all want to do? Like, let's.
Can I summarize it for you?
Yes.
Give me a moment.
Yes.
So, here's my notes. The problem exists in all districts. And we all want to attend the director's meeting, when you have it, Bruce. I would suggest we table the motion till after that meeting. And then the fourth element is policy changes. You mentioned drastic changes. Once we can get that, we can come back and fill in the gaps, get the financing behind it, or at least have a further discussion. Continually beating the problem to death, we all got that. I get it. I look at those pictures, I think it's in my park, or my, my district. So, we got all.
So, we got all that, but I think we need to, we've got closed session yet, it's 5:21, but I think that sums it up, you know? And then, excuse me, but Member Cantel has one quick comment.
Councilman Olivier and Brandow, years ago, and Bruce will remember this, they had, when there was, we had severe cutbacks, because of the economy, and the council talked about turning the Parks Department, over to the Police Department. And the Fresno Bee thought it was ludicrous, they drew a picture, a cartoon of a police car, with a lawnmower in the back of it. And, but anyway, I believe that Chief Dyer was able to put a plan together, of how the parks could be policed. And he may still have that plan, but, at that time, cutbacks came. But, I, he, he did have a plan put together, on how he would address that, where they would, I guess, rotate around, going to the parks at different times. And, it would be part of, I believe, the, the, you know, the northeast, northwest, you know, those, those officers that were assigned to those areas, that they would, that would be part of their, their patrol areas. And nighttime...
How many officers it took, or...
You'd have to ask Chief Dyer, he should be part of the discussion.
Okay, I mean, I'm willing to consider that.
But it was, it was, it was pretty good point.
I think that was back at a time, when Chief Dyer had something like 850 plus officers, a full contingency of dispatchers, and ministers.
CSOs.
Huh?
And CSOs, probably.
And CSO, so, so...
Well, okay, well hopefully, as we continue to restore...
Like I said, you're more than welcome to attend my meeting. I think I can even summarize even more. We all know what the problem is, Bruce go figure something out. In 120 days or more.
That was my motion, that's my motion. Do we not need a...
I think the problem is, is, I think the whole discussion's pretty much, I mean, you guys have punched up, but I, I mean, really, I mean, we all can say the same thing, over and over.
The fact is, I owe Councilmember Soria's district a response, we said we'd come back like in 60 or so days, so, I owe him that much, so.
Now, Clint, in your mind, have you met Clint, have you met with the consultant for the Parks Master Plan yet?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm, this is my last thing, Esmeralda.
You're getting the blah, 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 brother.
I wanna know how this ties in, I don't care about the blah, and I don't care about the Fresno Bee, who's not here today, telling us half of the problem, we get half of the problem. We wanna know is, if we bust these criminals, what are we gonna slap them on the wrist, and turn them out the next day? So that's nonsense. So, how does this tie in with the Parks Master Plan?
Just, just to kinda... I can't go back, I can't go back to my, 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 to the park, and, oh, then, we're working on, on, all this, and, 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 I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't go back to that.
Councilmember Brandow, what you're saying is, you wanna take a broader look, and you wanna codify, and you wanna, you wanna really have a good study, of the problems in our parks, and how to fix them. But I can't go back to my constituents in the neighborhoods, and tell them, oh, well, help is on the way, in the form of, a big chunk of paper, that costs 400,000 dollars. They want something to be done.
We've got excess citizens in District Two, that we can deputize. And we will operate in the middle of the night Bruce, and the, the situation will be fixed, but you might not like some of the other results.
Okay, there, there's some liability issues there as well. Now, we, again, it's 5:25, we have closed session, so hopefully, we're about done with this, next up is Member Soria.
Yeah, so, I will keep my comments very short, cause I think, my colleague here, pretty much said, said everything for us, so I agree with everything, I think that, as our council, we've talked about community policing, and really, how this works within community policing, because I think that, that, talking about that plan that Sal just mentioned, you know, we probably need to take it, get it off that shelf, and figure out how we incorporate it, within the community policing model, that we're trying to deploy. So I would suggest that. And also, just one thing, I know that we have the gentleman from Social Vocational Services, which, Inspiration Park, we're, I don't know if we're, they're using them, but they're using a similar vendor, is it...
We're actually using, using a contractor for the landscape maintenance.
Yeah, to do...
But, having them, contract with them to help keep the litter, and keep that park clean, I, I think, even if we didn't have this problem, I wanna have a further conversation with him.
Yeah, I think that that's an idea, and then the other thing that I just wanna bring up, is looking at the local conservation corps, with Fresno EOC, because I know that in the past, we've used them, for other areas with, within the city, for cleanups, and so, looking at them, so, our office would be, we'll be working with you guys, to try to figure out, I think in the end, what are some of those policy changes that we can make, and the investments that we need, I, cause I'd like to see what are some of the costs, to, you know, some of these things. And so I'm willing to be helpful, because I, I've experienced some of the same challenges, within my district. I would suggest Clint, I know that you wanna make sure that you have an answer to your residents, it'd be probably great to have maybe, your, your office do like a community cleanup, and, yeah, and so, people, I think that they'll be receptive to that, and, and they wanna see us also being proactive, in the interim, as we address the long-term issue. Thank you.
That was two minutes, beautiful, thank you. Uh, Member Fanez, or we set that?
I'll be really quick. Clearly, I agree with everything that's been said, and what I think that, Councilmember Olivier, just to respond, I think that, you know, asking us to make some policy recommendations is the right approach to this. But we can't leave it all on Bruce, so I think that we need to work cooperatively with, with him and staff, to give them the proper input, so they know how to make the recommendations. Cause, too many times, we have these great ideas, and we send staff off running, and then we chop it apart, when they bring it back. So, I just wanna make sure that, you know, and, I'm, I'm supportive for definitely trying to figure it out, but that, this body is working with the city manager, to developing craft policy, and don't just leave it all, in their shoes, to do it without, without our input. So, because by the time it comes back, we wanna have something that we all can stand behind, so we're not sending them, you know, running, chasing, you know, like a dog chasing their tail or something. So, thanks Council President.
I think you beat Member Soria, you're just under two minutes, those are the great, greatest comments ever. Okay, now, so it's, we have a motion, but there is no second.
I withdraw.
You withdraw the motion, thank you sir, so then that pretty much resolves this, I think we've given direction, to the administration, and we're willing to walk the walk with them, and take care of this the best way possible. So that concludes our agenda for today. Now, I've got two cards, well Gary, you weren't here, sorry, but we've closed unscheduled communication, I'm sorry about that. And then Paul, if you'd like to talk to one of the attorneys from the...
I haven't, I haven't seen the basics.
Well, listen to me please, there's a, there's an opportunity to discuss this, if you'd like to take advantage of it, it's up to you, alright? And, then we're gonna go into closed session, and Doug, do you have some announcements, City Attorney?
Yes, for closed session?
Yes, please.
We have a litigation, the Camrio versus City of Fresno, litigation King versus Repipe in the city, litigation Kennedy versus the City of Fresno, labor concerning fire management, real property negotiations concerning 5607 West Jensen, the Darling Company, litigation concerning Familius Adams, in the City of Fresno, and also joint session with the successor agency, concerning real property, with the listed APN, and Marlene Murphy as the negotiator.
Thank you very much.
I would not expect any announcement afterwards.
Very good, then the meeting will be adjourned.